Everybody, it's 6:30 and it is on August 9th, this is August 9th. And this is a select board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have an acceptance of the agenda. Seconded by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to read the statement before we start the meeting. It is the constituent select board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and all in hall participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask community members and all local state for it to be standard to support and respect our community. Having said that, we will move on to our first topic with our Watkins. Do you have any Watkins to see? Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
If you just don't mind coming up here and tell us your name and address.
Right here?
Yeah, so they can hear you.
Right into that one. Hi, my name is Judy Aronson. I live at 19 Frederick Road, but I grew up in the house at the bottom of the hill where the water treatment plant is gonna go.
Okay.
I just brought some information, I copied five copies, it's a lot of information just on what I've researched in the last 20 years. I don't wanna take up any time, I copied everything, I just wanna give it to you and you guys carry on.
Sure, I'm gonna ask just 30 seconds of what your research is, are you...
Um, it's all chasing that land basically. My parents bought from Emma Jenkins Turner who owned 100 acres in Citewood. So there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. I have a lot of documents from the registry of deeds. You're not supposed to write on the pages of the registry of deeds and it starts off with one whole page with C book, C book, C book. So I tried to follow that and copy all of them and just begin to take it a little better.
So are you suggesting that the town may not, or that that land may not be under our ownership?
No, not so much that, but it's always been displayed as 11 acres. And then back after 2003 when my mother passed away, they were gonna do a development and I raised my hand at one of the meetings and I asked how many acres were there? And I was told 15. So in these documents, there's a couple, like somehow that land was connected to Merritt Woods. So I just asked for you guys to look at what I've been looking at for the last 20 years. It's just been frustrating for me. But I just couldn't understand if it was displayed as 11 acres for like 100 years on all these cessers now, how it went to 15.
And we're talking about stern benefits, that's what we're...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So, again, not to, so we're probably not experts in reading deeds.
I know.
So...
It's just a lot of pieces to it.
What is the frustration? Because they, like it was 11, now it says it's 15, what is the frustration?
I don't know how it went from 11 to 15, but in here on one of the documents, it does, they were actually auctioning that out and it was including two lots from Merritt Woods. So the deed reads like say lots 8, 9 from Merritt Woods and 47 dash whatever it is, 26A. So to me, that was combined in, so that's where they came up with the 15.
Okay.
But I don't know. It's just been a big paper trail to go through. And this is just part of it. But I got mostly everything that's written on that first page, I have every document.
We'll be happy to look at it, but I know myself, against me for else, I'm not good at reading deeds and the very basics is anyway. So I wanna know what your concern is. Do you think that we should give that to attorney to make sure that the size is proper? Or do you have a problem with the water treatment plant going in, or what is the actual problem?
No, just to maybe even do a title search on our property to make sure that it's 11 acres. You know, because that's what I always saw it as. Um, title search, um... So trying to background all of that.
Yeah, I would suggest that we give the documentation to our council and compare it with the deed that we see at that closing and just see if there's anything on this.
Shouldn't a deed research done before?
Right, I think we have that information, but just to compare the two, just to make sure that we didn't miss something.
Yeah, because in a lot of this, it will tell you to go to a looking page, but it's not that page, it's another page. So I asked somebody in the registry, why is that? And they said because they filed it twice. So then again, I don't know what's wrong.
But we can do that, I mean, like Jim said, typically we bought, there was a development that was gonna go there.
Yep.
And then we ended up buying it for the town from that developer to give it due deed research at that time, but we can, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Can you just give it to the line?
Sure, I ran out of envelopes and ink. This one and the envelope is the same.
Thank you.
19 Frederick. It has my name and address, it's on the top. Thank you.
Are there any other Watkins? I'd say none, we're going to report.
Evening, we'll go through it quick as we can, we do have a big agenda. Just an update this morning, a couple new things, but I'll touch base. Quickly, let us start from this morning. Mamadada was nine, which was down from 14 last week. Our box two rating was up to 10.41, which is up from 8.94. Lewis County was at 8.68, up from 8.54. State was at 7.97, down from 8.08. There were 57 individuals in the ICU, that's up from 48 last week. 15 individuals intubated, down from 19 last week. So for the third week in a row, the COVID numbers are all over the place, up, down, all over the map. So we'll continue to say, if you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. Get vaccinated, make sure you have your boosters, we have three boosters now, so if you got the two, please go out and get them. The reservoir is at minus 30 inches, last week we were at minus 35. Protect Back Blue Pond Health State, minus eight. Average daily demand was 1.592 million gallons a day, down slightly from 1.623 million gallons last week. Commonwealth has upgraded to severe drought for the entire Southeastern Massachusetts. As the drought worsens, the groundwater drops, the groundwater drops, the output from the wells goes down. As we keep saying, as the output from the well goes down, we have to send more water to the water treatment plant. Plant does not treat for mangas. The reservoir has mangas in it, so that mangas goes through the plant out of the system. We think that's the major cause right now of the groundwater that we're experiencing in this area. We are working with our staff and the DDP, consultants, to see if there's a short-term fix that we can do that might help as we contract out the water treatment plant. But the actual answer to the mangas level is to contract the water treatment plant that treats the mangas. We'll continue working on that, we could get some rainfall today. The more rain you get, the more that'll make some multi-drive that mangas come down. Rainfall over the last seven days, not including this afternoon, that I got caught out in, was 1.17 inches. So we are on a tier four, water ban was a complete water ban, all non-essential outdoor watering. That includes vehicles and boats and our marinas. We are filing people, $300 a day for violations. The water department now has crews coming in in the early morning, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning to drive around. We can tell that your watering is on, so they'll be out in the morning to see if you are and able to check. If you tell us it's a well, if they don't have it, we have ways to check whether it's our water or your water. So we are being very aggressive in getting out there, working on old water running in. So we do need to get that demand down. We are in better shape for 2016, but the reservoir is starting to get, get low. The water department itself, where we're working on Rich Hill Road, they finished the old driftway. When the old driftway is finished, that will be paid by the two companies, part of their project. The affordable housing for Sanctuary Hall in Brooklyn was yesterday. Those who were chosen will be notified, as I said this morning, if you weren't notified or weren't chosen, do not despair completely, some of the people who were chosen will either have a place to live or not qualify anymore, so there's a chance that you can get still with that water in Sanctuary Hall. The payment contractor was on a little open bucket, Maple and Woodland Streets, they're raising castings, they're grinding today, we should see the payment shortly. They paid on Happy Road and the vicinity of the Toll Brothers project, Toll Brothers paid for the middle, we paid for the side of that. That was just an overlay. Nancy has informed me that the state has approved $1,076,000 on Chaplainity Grove projects to move forward. I can share that list with the board, that's out to you. That is on top of approximately 1.2 million efficient state local dollars that will be projected, uh, projecting and putting out the roads and sidewalks, hopefully in this period of season. Now Nancy's back, very timely. I want to congratulate Nancy and the finance team. I'm at Villa Valley, at Tobbly, sorry, Joe DeVito. We are the first community in the state to have our DOS Schedule A approved. It's actually kind of funny, it's a number of approved, one, number not approved, 300 picked. So we have the first one. Schedule A is all our revenues, our spendages, basically our basic financial information. Everybody's required to report that to the state, then report it to the title government. If you don't file the Schedule A, the state controls your state A. So we are the first community in the state to get that in. I know it's a lot of work, starting Nancy's gate right, but we are the first one to get it in, so actually really great job, I bet our financing got that in time. The town's gonna be hosting a home elevation seminar in conjunction with Nemo on August 30th, from 5 to 6 in Citewood Library and Community Room. This is a free step in our answer residents' questions about home elevation projects, why homeowners should consider home elevation, how much it might cost on opportunities for funding assistance among other topics. If you're interested, please email Cory Miles, our coastal resource officer, cemiles@citewoodma.gov. She just wants to get an handle on how many people are gonna be attending. But if you live near the coast and you're thinking about elevating, it's a very good project to go and get all the answers you might have about why is this, how we would do that. One related update from weather, I gave the weather update for the thunderstorm today that I didn't pay attention myself. I brought it and it sits in my truck for a while. We're gonna have astronomical high tides again this week, starting tonight going through the weekend. So Cold Park Marina, Millwall, 5000 speed. There might be some minor flooding down there over the next couple of days. And that's mostly gonna be evening tide. The Seaport Economic Council has awarded a grant to the Citewood with an amount of $367,000. This is for the permitting and design dredging in Citewood Arbor, actual construction of permitting and design of that. We're looking at four areas for dredging. Down the avenue, the Locksman Association areas, the area of Cold Park Way Marina, the Maritime Center Marina, and the town pier, these are the four areas that we look to dredge. The actual channel, I asked Steve what that dredging channel, that's the responsibility of the empty court mansion is, and he would do that. Thank you, the Seaport Economic Council, nice job, it's Steve and the staff getting that done. Once we have that permit in, then we can start planning on doing some dredging in the actual harbor, help out all this, kind of commission it out. Two more quick things, I know it was really hot today, but we gotta look at the cloud drivers. So anybody out there that's looking at the cloud this winter, please contact the DPW. We also have several physicians, make it, DPW grounds. So if you're interested, contact the DPW, we can let you know what those jobs are and what they look like. And finally, as the board is aware, the town has closed on the Morgan Lincoln property. Changed all the locks, we upgraded the electrical system a little bit, now it's kind of looking decent down there. We're probably gonna have to bring recreation and then start commissioning. Maybe the ones who was pushing for the purchase of that property, Seaport plans to find a way to have that property moving forward. Just being in there, the block's been letting me know we can't remember the buildings. The house, the main house itself is gonna be a lot of... There's also quite a bit of materials left in the building, so we're gonna have to find someone who specializes in estates and probably at least not too much to go through that. Probably that wall's not in the house, but I'm doing well.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
No, I just wanna say that you, to the DPW, you know, they've been doing a lot of personal stuffs at different homes, brown town, brown water, trying to solve where they can solve. And they made a pretty big solve last week with the brown water. People left that brown water for years there, they shut the gate and then they left the water. So, you know, there are solutions sometimes, not always, but sometimes. Here's why, thank them for that extra diligence, the residents are really happy.
Yeah, that one, we really can't flush right now because of the water issue, but in that particular case, here we have a straight walk in a different direction. Having an uphill which changes the mangas and the last now to a water stream. So if you do have brown water, you have a mangas problem, you will see my cloud out there. Try to find a way to solve, you know, in the end, it's going down to finding a short-term fix and then watch what you want.
Thank you, and again, important to, if you have brown water, to report it so that the water department can see if they can do something. And we hear you, we all are really in tune with it and it will be easy fix, we would have done it already. And we'll try to do what we can and hopefully this cabinet will, uh, will help us keep the big standard up. Sorry for anyone that's here on the bed. Any other questions?
I would just thank Nancy, the number one of the state.
Congrats.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Jim, did you have an update for Paul on...
We played phone tag, I'm actually pretty sure I'm gonna get a call, definitely.
Okay, next item of discussion is a donation. Chief, how are you?
Good, how are you? The answer request, acceptance of a donation, partly $7,500 for landscaping for the station for our firehouse. I was approached a couple weeks ago from Lydicoke. This is our resident, along with D.R. Warren, I believe, who's on the recreation committee. Proceding us, they'd like to plant some shrubs, some sea grass and some other plantings down there that could do so to the area. They're related to Mount Fire Station, they think it looks great, they wanna see if they can answer shrubs. I was moved from the, with that alternate, when the contract came out, we didn't have enough money to do the final landscaping. So places are great, the grass is coming in, the fence is up, but they wanna add some landscaping. I did more than $7,500, I'm presenting corporates, he's financing it. I think Dina Wigmore, global local landscape company, we should go with her.
Right, very generous. Does someone have to approve that in terms of design or planning? Do you look at that, can you look at it? Any landscaping structure trouble?
I think Dina Wigmore might go on your vacation.
Dina Wigmore?
Dina.
Dina?
Yeah, I think, yeah. If your vacation committee have, possibly, a possibility.
We can run the plan by, that's fine.
Maybe ask some good ideas to launch that, do you?
Yeah, they seem to be pretty knowledgeable about the plans, obviously, seeing out there. They haven't talked about landscaping, they made recommendations on what to play, what to play, so.
Any questions for Chief?
Oh, sorry, when do they, in terms of the plan, because we got an issue right now. When do you think they'll do the installation, do they say?
I think, you know, so I can have a lot of stories, it's up the next, the next months, you know, I don't know, I can be a landscaper out there.
And then we have rain in the forecast, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So, I mean, you know, you get a little bit of rain, so obviously, we hope if it's more rain, sort of wet itself, obviously, they're concerned about that, so, you know, they're a live landscaper, you know, next two or four weeks. I know it's a good time to stop planning, rocks and tubs first, so. Take a plan and, you know, take a nice...
Got motion?
Move them. Sorry, move them, select board accepted donation, 7500 college, the Citewood Fire Department. Landscaping, plantings, power station, fire station for.
Second.
Second, with our thanks.
Second, with our thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's yours. Any other discussion?
Thank you for your efforts, good job raising your donations.
All right.
Win and loss.
Win and loss to the candidate. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna stick up.
So this person has a work thing she has to finish, she'll be back in a little bit. I think the next discussion is special meeting board, there's a couple planning board articles, I'm gonna go over. Is Anthony or...
That is chair.
Oh. Congratulations, buddy.
All right, good evening. So the planning board requesting two articles on a warrant this year for the, for the special town meeting. The first is a change in the graphic for the setback, step back in street enclosure. There's confusion in zoning bylaw with this graphic in section 750.5A, section 3. Graphic shows a 45-foot tall building at the 50-foot setback line. Section 750.25A2 tells that the maximum and minimum building heights as defined by building type in section 750.6. 750.6 indicates the height of a mixed use and not the family building to be four stories, 40 feet. So indeed, you do not have a 45-foot tall building in Citewood. So we've seen proposed projects misunderstanding this graphic and so therefore, they think it's the height requirement that's represented in this graphic and which it is clearly not and the zoning bylaw clearly says that. So we want to change the graphic to show the 40 feet so that people clearly understand the graphic. The setback, step back is supposed to help step buildings back based on height so that you don't create a canyon effect along the street line.
Can you, just go over the, the graphics also differ in this actual setback numbers? The first one says...
The first one, you know, so...
Says 25 and 50 feet?
Right, so the first one, you know, that's currently in there, it shows the pink and it shows that at 50-foot setback, you can now 45-foot tall building, which you can't.
Okay, so the numbers are wrong both this way and this way?
Right, I mean, so the second, the new figure attempts to say at the right way line, your maximum building height is 25 feet. Then if you go in 12 and a half height, 12 and a half feet, your maximum building height's gonna be 30 feet. If you go in 37 and a half feet, your maximum building height is gonna be 40. So it's just a clarification to show that you can't have a 45-foot tall building.
And the 25 and 50-foot setback numbers are also irrelevant as well?
Well, I mean, if you have, they're not totally relevant, it's just that we just ran the numbers. We ran a 25, 30, and 40-foot number because those are common heights that we see with buildings. So that's really all this article attempts to do is to clarify, clarify something and it's really just a housekeeping article.
Any questions? Karen?
Yeah, so to clarify, is you're using the language, it's the diagram that's inconsistent?
The diagram is inconsistent with the language already in the zoning bylaw. And because height, there's a section under the VCN that's called building height.
Right.
This it says, the building height is defined in the table in 750.6. It clearly states that and then in the table, it clearly states what the heights are.
Good.
Great. Any other questions? Much clearer.
The second article that we are requesting is to eliminate penthouses. We've come to the conclusion that penthouses really dump a lot in Citewood. The graphics, zoning bylaw clearly indicates height limits don't apply to penthouses as long as they are not visible from any sidewalk on the perimeter of the property and meet the design standards in 750.6. We've had a couple instances where they try, they're trying to propose penthouses. One of them, they told us, oh no, you won't see it, you won't see it, you won't see it. And then the architect admitted, you're gonna see it. I mean, because it's pretty hard not to see it from the sidewalk in front of your property. And so we feel that, you know, we might as well just eliminate it if it really can't be applicable to any, to any projects.
Miss Coven?
So does the, do the, does the, if we were to allow penthouses, does that, do they exceed the 40-foot?
Yes, they do, if they're not visible from a sidewalk. And so we've had, I mean, so we've had people go down the path that, oh no, it's not visible and then they discover way far down the line that yes, it is visible and so therefore, it exceeds the height requirement and you really can't have that. So we're just trying to say no.
So will we get, I'm sure we'll get some pushback from developers, that is basically otherwise being sold.
Nobody came to the public hearing.
Okay.
Nobody came, nobody came to the public hearing for the setback, step back, or the building height.
Well, unfortunately, in my experience, they, you love come to the public hearings and then all of a sudden they show a town meeting and start screaming at us. So I'm just asking if, you know...
We have not heard any comments from anybody on this.
And none of the usual subjects?
No, they, we had some usual suspects at the public hearing and they weren't there for common driveways, but since that public hearing, we eliminate, we decided we wanted to spend more time working on common driveways unless it's not going to town meeting at this point in time. That's the only thing that they were interested in.
So we hope there won't be a penthouse delegation at town meetings?
We hope not, I mean, we do have a project that's been filed after the first notice of public hearing, after the, after the public hearing and it has no special permit. So it does not have any legal protections for zoning freeze.
And then I have one final question. I did note in the language of what can go on a roof. There's a lot of stuff you can actually put on a roof.
Yes, there is a lot of stuff you can put on a roof.
But one thing that kind of caught my eye and I was sort of surprised by it was wind turbines. Do we allow wind turbines on roofs?
I guess I would have to look at that.
I mean, given our experience of that, I'm just, you know, if...
Okay, I don't, I don't wanna get into that.
You know, I understand it's, it's in section B, I guess that's section B. Yes, height limits do not apply mechanical stairwell housing, roof mounting, ceiling, radio, and internet transmission equipment, vents or exhaust, smaller panels, or small wind turbines.
Okay.
I'm just considering the potential nuisance factor there, given our experience.
Maybe we need to look at that for the spring town meeting.
And that would be a special permanent situation? Or are all these things just regular planning board questions to...
It depends on, in the VCN, it depends on what you're asking for. So if you're, if you're, we have certain number, certain projects that can be by right and then we have density bonuses that throw you into a special permit or if you have certain types of parking, it requires a special permit as well. But we'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that.
It just caught my eye, I'm gonna...
We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanna say I, this, this did work, they cleaned up a lot of documents, thank you for taking the comments.
Okay, no, that doesn't make sense. So, yeah, so basically this was a kind of loophole, people would bill higher and now we're just saying, look, here's our height restriction, you wanna put a penthouse? Put it so it stops at 40 feet. Any comments from the audience? Any other questions? Great, I think we've ruled all the stuff.
Okay, great.
But you guys move. All right, our next topic of discussion is an outdoor entertainment permit at 29 Gander pasture domain. Yeah, come on. Maria?
Yes.
Have a seat and. Put the mic and tell us your name and address.
It's Maria DeNast and it's twenty-nine G M, it's extremely.
So what do you want to do?
So I'm just hosting a wedding for my stepson. So it's four to eleven. It's gonna be back here. Right now a D J. Uh, Katie Rose. So we already called the, the D J so we could arrange the parking at the apartment in the five. So this is about two dollars. So it won't be a parking on the street.
Great. Um, and you have D J I C from four to eleven, have you notified all your neighbors?
Well, they are not, yes.
They are not.
But I haven't notified it by email, but I will, but they do want to.
Okay. Great, any questions? No. Yeah, so just notify the neighbors, make sure they don't have an issue with it. You know, eleven o'clock is kind of on that.
Right.
That edge, usually around ten, but, um, but it's a wedding and just.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if there's any feedback, they'll, they'll call or ring, so.
Okay. All right.
Great. So if I have a motion to.
Grant, outdoor entertainment permit to Melvin, we ask D J at Fred and Ben to go at twenty-nine G M pasture lane. Saturday, September tenth, twenty-two, four P M to eleven P M.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's four to none.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, every time.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, we're cruising. Discussion board and finalize the council on aging building use policy in the H A. Go ahead. First, we're going to do an event at the Seater Center.
Yes.
So that we can find that. Okay, do you want to go over the event?
Uh, sure, yes, absolutely. We have one, we'd like to plan or have planned for Friday afternoon, September second. It's four to six, beginning of the Labor Day weekend, first night in the harbor. Secrets out, our chef plays in the bands and they are very good. So we wanted an opportunity to have them come and it seemed like it was a good experience during the daytime. And not just procedures since it would be outside on the patio in the backyard, it would be nice to open it up and make it a community event. So that's, oh, that's what we'll do and try to advertise, we'll get a part on, a part on social media. And by putting up some flutters, maybe in the library. We'll just get the word out that it really is just hot dogs and basketball guys to cook on Will's side. And just simple, simple music and outdoors and games for everyone over there watching as you work. So that's the idea.
Awesome, four to six on September second, and this is sponsored by the Seater Center.
It is, uh, the Seater Center.
Any questions still there? Well, I think it's great, I think it's pretty community event, pretty cool, great on Labor Day weekend. Any questions from the audience? Um.
We, we did notify, or we did email the, the media butters and I, I forgot that it was okay. And I also contacted the food, D J, the recreation department just to let them know we would be doing that on the ground, but no concepts.
Okay, and it is amplified, right?
It is amplified.
So Suzanne, this would be good kind of test case for you to come back and tell us.
Yep.
All right, and I'm motioning.
Move to approve the council on ancient building, oh no. Page, we track an outdoor entertainment permit to the H A for a large person and Seater Center two through three. First parish road on Friday, September second, nine twenty-two, four P M until six P M.
Second.
Second, ladies can't deal, further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is four to zero. Thank you very much. Now we'll go on to your building use policies. And first you got that and then we can say you can't deal anymore. Yeah.
Well, it seems, especially after the last few times being here and the questions that arose, that then after speaking with the town administrator, that it is a lot more prudent maybe at this point to not consider private rental, I guess. That way that takes that right out of, um, out of the mix. And we do have enough requests in terms of the community groups and different town affiliated sponsored programs, organizations, individual, town departments, whatever it might be, that I think we do have enough to handle and enough opportunity hopefully. We'll continue to try to, to do it ourselves to bring the community to the building, we need that opportunity, so. It may just be that at this time, it's just, we're not so prudent to do the private, private stuff. We really can't manage or can't find a way to clearly state what is and is not appropriate, so. That's what we thought. So I tried to edit the document so that it's still work we've done, at least is, is still appropriate for determining whether or not it's. Let's say this, the Garden Club or the Education Foundation, whether we close it a public event or a private event just for their members. They may still have entertainment requests, they may still have other requests. So all of the work that we've done here is still appropriate, I think. One of the questions had been how to charge, or what to charge for a custodial fee and who. So I thought maybe forty dollars an hour seems reasonable. It could be applied to all, it could be, um, my discretion, I guess. It could occasionally be waived depending on who it was that we were serving. So that's uncomfortable with that if you are, but if you want to discuss. And then I know we had a question about what, you know, define community groups for us. So I did try to define that the last time, you know, examples, including but not limited to, and try to name some that we already have, but maybe there would be others who would request it. And there was questions about end times for events, so those would still, those would still apply. We'll try to end things a half an hour before we really do want them to be out of the building. A lot easier when you can manage who it is that you're working with.
Well, thank you for your patience and going back to this document so many times. And thanks for, for changing it from what we asked you last time. Open the door before, any, any questions?
Do you think it looks messy?
Yeah, I think it'll help eliminate some of those jump balls a little bit, so you don't have to have some of those. Hopefully a little bit easier to kind of manage from you, but then.
Yeah, we can revisit, maybe another year.
Yeah, well, let's see with the demand, there's other places in town people can go. The one thing that I want to make sure, the thought process behind the fee per hour.
Yes.
We shouldn't allow somebody to use the building to cause more work for your staff. So that's, that's the whole point. So you should probably find an, an entity that will clean it up for that rate. So that you really aren't involved, you know, we don't, the goal isn't to have the veterans coming around the bed and then you have to come in Monday morning and clean it all together.
That's true, and, and for the most part, and at least my experience so far has been they are all really self-managed in cleaning up and taking all the trash. If we wanted them to put things back, then they would.
Yeah, and I didn't, the veterans were just in me, my product, because I don't use it, so, so it's, uh.
Those guys.
You know, even, anybody, it could be the, the, the garden club.
It could be the garden club. Well, I can just see what you mean, which is yes, it's not always really a burden on us.
I mean, even a hundred and twenty dollars isn't worth your staff coming in and being on the cleaning committee and stuff. But we'll give it a shot, we have to adjust it later when we get, um, any questions from the audience? Yes, just name and address.
Suzanne Green for your side, first parish road. Um, I just want to say it looks fabulous. It looks really great. Um, I think the only thing that stood out to me again with the parking, I just maybe the wording was across the street. Makes me think if the people think across the street is the church, even though it's just across the street, it's going to work. I think that would really be my comment stood out to me maybe. Same.
What do you think so?
Uh, it's section B.
Section B?
God, nice.
Yeah, it's just that for the overall work, I, I think, I think under the circumstances, not most of it would be managed by us anyway. And if we needed the extra parking, then we would explicitly reach out and ask who comes to the church or if they had to go to Central Field or these recreations, so it might not be as. That was really.
That's the central field?
Yeah, I just, you know, in case people weren't familiar, you know, we know where it is, but where it was at, you know, it's kind of down and across versus just across the street. I don't know. I didn't really, I thought, like, I thought of it, I wasn't from here, that I would not understand that, but, um, that was.
Do you want to put parentheses in the church parking lot?
I can make adjustments.
I thought the church said they would be willing to let someone blow parking. Obviously not with Sunday, but.
And I guess that's the maybe available, we're, we're.
We just permission. We can't really have a process.
Well, here that I'm going to say just stay casted, feel about cross.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Just straight across.
Excellent.
That works.
Central field.
Very elegant, yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion in the comments? Okay, if there's none, then I have a motion.
Move to approve the council on ancient building use policy as amended, um, outlined by the council of H A's director of the day.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, four to zero. Great.
Thank you.
So we're a little bit ahead of schedule and, um, Mr. Kern is on a, a workhorse, he'll be back in a little bit. So we're going to postpone the discussion on the stairs, um, until she gets back. And also I think people may be attending, we don't want to be too far there at all. So let's talk about the, um, next item is the special block party. And it just so happens that, uh, Mr. Lawrence just lost the number.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Lawrence Norton.
Ladies, please, may I have a please? What are you ready?
Well, I think we have a party of ladies, um, that's been parked outside this year for, um, summer. We're doing it in conjunction with, uh, friends of the South Shore Seaford Development, um, which is an old foundation of five hundred seats. Here is fish. Processed to go to schools, to the council of agents and whatever's moving, whatnot. So we're trying to find a way to generate a little bit of income to put back in that cave for all the fish that they give us over the years. So we have a block party, we have Stella coming up with their beer truck, which went in the loading zone. It's all inside the building. Our people, they've served up there just because we don't want to have people throw the whole building crammed up in the upstairs. So, so separate people, we're going to serve food, don't make run fishing. We're also going to have just an acoustic duello, some of the things and some of the, uh, top play.
Outside or inside?
They'll be outside, yes.
So are you going to just put some sort of barrier?
One thing I'm going to do is do it from the, it's got like a strike sweet box, um, into my, what the neighbors, cordless. In the area, um, and I'd be able to, or something, I said I would be able to, and be sure, focusing over the middle street, um, or the appropriate, um, check for these. Police department, I can start our parking, um, which we're concerned over more aware of parking issues on the other places itself. There'll be nobody parking from, from, something I think we nailed that, I hope we have a whole park.
It is a supply panel?
It's, uh, public.
Oh, okay, it's a public, yes. So the, so the tickets are?
Yeah, so tickets are sold to K, um, Altra, H hole. She's on Apple Hall, that's Apple Aids and Shear, she's a great job for us. Tickets sold for.
Great. Any questions, uh, Karen?
Just one, I, I was, well, then I read it back on my, I had read a column and I thought it looked like you weren't going to Labor Day butters until a week before the event?
No, they're all, they're all, they're all, they're all, um, notified of weddings and as far as we're aware.
Okay, sure. And, uh, just for the board, um, this is a trust thing, the, uh, the K D C folks this morning. And this is the current event, she said it's a public event, um, that we should be allowing people to let them go in these sort of business centers now. So that they put it on there and then see out there, they're trying to populate it and we only be able to people tell them it's coming up to about that. So you're giving the opportunity to be able to plug with that.
Okay.
And then just behind the, the network parking lot.
Yeah.
It's private.
Questions?
Yep.
Questions?
Okay, it's back.
Yeah, great event. How many people you expecting to be?
Well, the, the building, you know, limited capacity, that's why we want to have it outside, so probably.
Yeah, so there'll be people on the two floors as well as.
Hold them in.
We're in a penthouse.
That's, and, and you're penthouse. We just found out, Julie, you could actually put a wind turbine on top of your building.
I tried to put nails in.
Great, and it's from three to seven, so.
Three to seven hours. Other than.
Great, and I have a motion. Oh wait, let me see, anyone in the public, uh, audience have any questions?
There are three questions, one to each of the elements, um, so I will give them all together. Move to approve special event permit for ladies harbor side block party to be held on August twenty-seventh, twenty-two, from three to seven P M. Outside for ladies harbor side at eight hour place. And move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit for acoustic guitar duo from three to seven P M on August twenty-seventh, twenty-one. Do at the same location and move to approve lending, all alcohol permit to H hole club for the event, um, from seven to eight P M at that location from three, uh, until seven P M.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, four to zero.
That's all, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Um, is the V F W?
Yeah.
Come on up, we'll get you out of here.
Oh, they want to hang your shirt around us.
You want to keep the decent outside, you're playing it. Great, so you want to license change the manager?
Yes, sir.
Great, so what's going on, while you're doing it?
Okay, so, uh, Ryan Young was one of the last thirty years. I'm a member of the V F W, um, probably youngest one there. He, uh, Ryan Young, uh, over in the office, I took over his place, quarter master. And, uh, the veteran calls, the V F W's, and I was standing out, uh, pubs, or areas shut down. And I'm just trying to save it for later celebration. So I want to transfer the money to, uh, to, uh, say, sure, they have payments here.
Do you have any experience?
Uh, I've been running it before the last year.
Oh yeah, just with his name on it?
Yes, with his. So I'm the president of the master now, so I'm trying to help finance this, so we'll discuss.
Great. Any questions?
Just, uh, you're on site, you're there.
I'm there every day for four, five hours.
What are the hours of?
So right now for summer months, I'm closed on Monday and I'm hoping at four o'clock until usually around ten o'clock. Every, every day, uh, who, who we put, uh, on the winter months, fall, winter, I'm hoping somebody's meeting. And so I'm pleased to be back though. Like we did the, uh, little league at a fundraiser here. So we, uh, like if the cops scout, the girls scout or anybody wants, uh, that's, like a youth organization wants to use the function hall, we have tools, right? It's kind of like a gift back to the community.
Did you have other questions, Karen?
No, that's, yeah. And no incidents in the last year?
No, but we, we did have one in, uh, November, uh, on November ten. Jumpman was in the bar and, uh, there was an argument and did my own, he was kind of, kind of, got one. And just, uh, he's been, since then, I trust that's when the problems come out or problems or something. He was never a member, um, which is something they were. Two, two, uh, shouldn't be members, uh, waiting for veterans, they were there. Her body, and, uh, person who fired the weapon, it just got it back there. He just got the permit back, he didn't want a gun. person who fired the, the weapon, had just got it back there, he just got the permit back, he didn't want a gun, and then turned an eye, and pulls out, just chatted about it. On that, we've had no fights, uh, war with businesses, uh, both problems.
And the police responded?
Yes, police responded, he, uh, he was arrested.
I couldn't stop laughing.
Never wrong. One day I wasn't there.
Any questions?
No.
Great, and, uh, that, it's, it's open to the public, right?
It, it is open to the public, because I don't have a, I'm not yet, closed it off to a private club. I mean, I have bought in thirty new members in the last eighty months, but it's been a couple more years before I made, uh, private club.
Okay, so, public right now, there's a membership there.
Yes.
When it gets to what number?
Um, we haven't decided that, okay, that part yet, um, but it has to be a broad decision, so. But right now, just to stay alive, stay as long, and keep the place up, so it's, it's open to the public.
Great. Any questions from the audience? See none, um, that one.
Move with Selena Moore to approve the application for a change of manager to Michael Flaherty, for the situal post three round six nine VFW Inc., located at seven thirty six Chief Justice Bush Highway, for all kinds of alcohol beverages, club licenses.
I'm just gonna add from Brian Yado, two months. Second by Ms. Goodrich, further discussion, see none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, four to zero. Thank you for stepping up and keeping it going.
Thank you very much.
Um, we're gonna wait a couple more minutes of this, uh, or Kern must will be involved with discussions here. So I think what I'm gonna do is ask, uh, Chris to come in, and we'll do a couple of capital items, does that make sense? Okay, well, he's, he's right there in the waiting room. Chris, we're ahead of schedule, and we're waiting for more to come back and talk about the stairs, which I think ninety-nine or something people in the room are here for, um, so we're gonna do a couple of capital items again. Capital, one of the easy ones, I'll have. Uh, let's do the first one. Does, uh, does anybody know of people that are going to be coming, because we're really ahead of schedule for these, these topics? Jimmy, have you heard anything?
There's been some question, did receive correspondence on the CPC articles, I don't recall the handle.
Capital's all pretty simple. Waterways, most detailed, but I can't, yeah, yeah, the waterways is most detailed.
Everybody from Waterways, come in.
Seriously. I can do about thirty and fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand, but.
Great.
So, can you move the microphone to one of you?
All right.
You moving for a microphone?
Yeah.
About that.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna start with the?
We'll start with Waterways. So, the Waterways Commission is moving forward with phase two of the Cole Parkway Marina Dock Replacement Program. It's currently funded through, and awarded, one million dollar Seaport Economic Advisory Council grant, and two town share authorizations, total of four hundred fifty thousand. They are requesting the borrowing authorization of one million two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the cost increase of the project, since the grant was originally submitted, uh, this was F Y twenty one, two. Not last time we even made the floor, though. An amendment to the grant application will be filed after the actual bids are received in September, with the hopes that the SEAC will agree to fund eighty percent of the additional costs, reducing the towns' cost to two hundred fifty-five thousand, plus the original four fifty in town share authorization. Some of our findings from our meeting and discussions with Waterways is, uh, the demand for dock space, so the projects to reach the arena, um, were actually decreasing the number of slips by about three, maybe two, by increasing the total footage that we can get. So, the demand for dock space is excellent, the revenue growth has been positive over the last ten years, operating expenses are rising at a rate of five to ten percent per year. Their current dock rates are twenty-five to sixty percent below, uh, rates being charged by private entities in Citro Harbor, of yacht clubs, and, uh, no war, so. Prior to twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, rates had not increased for approximately twelve years. At the beginning of twenty twenty-one, dock rates were raised to one hundred and ten dollars per linear foot for residents, uh, a hundred and forty dollars for non-residents. Roughly ninety-five percent of the slips are at least two residents. This is a main increase of ten dollars per foot over the twenty twenty rates. In tw- in twenty twenty-two, the owners of, uh, No Warf Docks, T P G is the company name, raised their rates from two hundred to two hundred and seventy dollars, levels of thirty percent increase. Since a yacht club charges about a hundred and forty dollars. In light of current inflationary environment, and the fact that expenses for the dock replacement has doubled, uh, committee finds it unreasonable for the Waterways Committee to expect the town to approve one point two seven five million without requiring a subsequent increase to dock rates. Uh, members of the Waterways Committee suggested that boat owners are paying for dock improvements through the dock fees, while it is true that contention ignores that the boat's foot fees are a substantial discount to prevailing market rates. It's our consideration, there is no reason why this particular service that is used by just a hundred and seventy-two voters should be receiving such a large discount, using twenty-three feet as an average boat size. The range of difference between private rates and Citro, uh, private rates being charged in Citro Harbor, and owners receiving subsidy benefit, uh, up to thirty-six hundred eighty dollars per year. The difference between what No Warf charged to what. If rates were increased to a level consistent with the market, there would be more retained earnings generated, and that would allow the Waterways Commission more flexibility with investigating other capital, correct, uh, capital, including projects. Capital planning took two votes on this item, uh, the, uh, if one was more symbolic, we would like to recommend that the Waterways Commission raise their rates, uh, to more, to, more commiserate with current prevailing rates, uh, which, when again, would help them with upcoming projects to have, have their own more available accounts. And we did approve to recommend the borrowing authorization for the one point two seven five.
So first, I want to thank you for giving us your, your opinion on that, it's, it's kind of not typical of the capital planning committee to come back and, and tell that, you know, to give your input in terms of how the revenue source would be generated for an enterprise fund, but I, I really do appreciate that you go into it and, and add that in for them. The fact of the matter is, all the money comes out of the fund anyways, whether it's capital, or it's, you know, all of that is being paid by the enterprise fund. Um, so, all of it's more interesting.
However, we're still borrowing to enable these grant, uh, these grant applications, things like that. If Seaport Economic Committee picks up the eighty percent, and we're left with two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we would have to borrow, and we pay that, if they had more retained earnings, we wouldn't even have to borrow for that.
Right, and that's the financial management piece of it, which is, which is, there's no right or wrong, right, as long as the, as long as the whole enterprise fund in general is in the black, then we're, but I completely, I don't disagree with your thought process, and I'm sure the committee's gonna come before us at some point in time with the recommendations that you're making, it makes sense.
So, you know, and, and like I said, it was a symbolic vote, more than anything, we strongly, don't come back to us, you know, asking for more money for nothing, without saying, we, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate, so I, I want to say thank you, I'm not being critical, but, I'm gonna open up the, the rest of the board before I, uh, any, any questions in the audience?
No, I, I think you covered exactly those comments, so, uh, this, uh, the, the great skill of our finance to issue a data grant to, to reverse this, this, our vote tonight is to ask for the, for all funding, so that we can be in position to do so.
Um, one note, if, even if, uh, Seaport Economic Committee does not pick up any of the cost, the additional cost of the town, I have this right here, would only be a hundred and forty-two dollars. Annoying and declining, if we hadn't picked up.
Forty-two thousand dollars?
Hundred and forty-two dollars.
So, a decline.
I'm sorry, I'm missing that.
The hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Forty-two thousand.
Yeah, right. You want all the words and cents?
Just all the zeros.
Zeroes.
I skipped, I skipped from now, and I got that number, which is, yeah.
Eric, did you have any other?
No, please.
Eric, no. Eric? Great, so, um, so again, the capital planning committee feels that this is a necessary project.
Absolutely.
It supports the project in general.
Voting, you do.
But you are just kind of commenting on the, on the funding mechanism of it.
Yes.
Great. Open up to, uh, discussion from the audience?
Hi, I'm Brian Kelly, six one Riley Road, uh, Waterways, and we, uh, we met with Chris and the capital committee last week, uh, the reason for meeting was to understand with the new arena, whether or not the beginning's slipped, lost, and it's, uh, what the revenue impact would be. Instead, this dovetailed into a conversation about a potential raise in rates. So, at this point, we, I would like to say, from Waterways perspective, we're in a, in a bit of a disagreement about necessity, necessary requirements to raise rates. We don't believe that capital has all the information regarding what the other town renters' rates are, which we'll share with them, nor do we believe, uh, there's two hundred fifty thousand dollars debt service coming off over the next two years, with a fifteen-year, uh, if we, if we had to finance this entire, was going to five million, as Nancy's indicated, it would be about a one hundred thirty-eight thousand, uh, on a fifteen-year note. It was slightly higher, it was obviously ten-year, or a slightly less than twenty, and since the town does principal upfront, with declining over the life of it, there's about a forty-seven thousand dollar, uh, decrease year one to year fifteen. So, with two hundred fifty thousand dollars coming off of our debt service, this fund is still evidently healthy, and we don't see the need to immediately pull the lever on a rate increase, but that's something that we will give uh, consideration to, and have further discussions with the capital.
Great, Eric. Well said, and I think that, I mean, that's, that's what you're supposed to do, so, the budget process will come along quickly, the season's already behind us, and I'm sure you're gonna evaluate what needs to be done for next season, and that'll be, go through its due process of Nancy, Jim, us, the advisory committee, and go from there, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's some sort of rate increase in that. Any questions from the audience on the, um, budget cover? Thanks, Chris, um, I know you've been all waiting up for the stairs, we're waiting for, uh, Mr. Kern to get back, she had to go up for a, uh, a quick business call, and she will be back when she gets back there, discuss the stairs. Uh, until then, we're gonna keep weather forward. So, uh, Jenkins, would be in Jenkins School.
The Jenkins School roof, uh, the school department came to us with a request for one million two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of Jenkins School roof. The replacement of Jenkins School roof was deferred from the F Y twenty-three capital plan, uh, to the following year, as it was too young to qualify for math school building, MSBA reimbursement. They received an unsolicited offer from a solar company to replace roofs at two schools at no cost of town, in exchange for placement of solar panels on the structures. Uh, the town has limitations on the amount of energy it can generate, so, this came down to approving the borrowing authorization, which would give Dr. Dutch, uh, the ability to negotiate with the original solar company, and another company that he has worked with, uh, they have some great rates to offer, uh, they have, it's a great opportunity, but the details are very, almost useless until we find out if, as a town, we're allowed to actually produce more renewable energy. So it's, it, any way you look at it, whether we go through an SBA, or this deal, or however it's done, the borrowing authorization has to be done, uh, this is the current quote we have, to do the roofs. We went ahead and voted on it to allow Dr. Dutch to proceed with this, and having done, uh, it was a unanimous vote, so it's nothing.
So, explain the solar component of it, is it your sense that he's going to proceed with that?
So he is gonna proceed with negotiations, one company, the one, uh, solid out, was unsolicited, was offering to do panels on schools, sell back power at seventeen cents, and we get two free roofs, another company that he's worked with, was offering power at nine cents, but no free roofs, he wants time to work to go back and talk to them, and negotiate with them about doing roofs, and things like that.
Questions?
There are no such things as free lunches there, um, I, I guess, I guess my question is, well, Karen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not my fault, you continue.
Thank you, um, indeed, then, Jim, because the fact that we don't use the windmill at night, does that create capacity for us, I think, uh, potentially?
We've also added new buildings, a huge part, trust me, so, that maybe, um, capacity must be there, that's something that goes work here, it's probably the state of that, not a project.
Well, and I would like to consider the, um, the water treatment plant in that mix of, uh, potentially, if you need to use, we might change there. So that could also be a possibility.
I mean, it makes no sense to me that the cap on us, the energy we can produce.
Well, it's absurd, it's, it's, uh.
Say it, what makes no sense?
That it caps how much green energy that we just move up, we use.
I think Karen had two or three good points there, there's gonna be excess capacity, we're not using it as much as we, uh, as much as we'll be, we're actually using more because.
But we're still more energy than we used to, we used may have capacity to have more solar.
Right.
That's our try. We're close.
Eric, did you have a thought?
I, A.J., a question, uh, I assume that facilities is involved in this conversation, uh, because the building maintenance is responsible, able to handle it, not about production?
The school facilities person is, and they'll get more involved as we go along, right now, it's really pretty just exceptional.
Yeah, okay.
Goodness, where I echoed, not just that, I always thought the cap was, uh, that you can sell back, not produce, you can always capture, uh, as many of them do, uh, on-site as well, and when there's any companies do on-site capture, it's like capital selling back to national grid, uh.
If that was offered a school, the deal, not for the water treatment plant.
We, we have legislation, we can use whatever we produce, we can get over that.
Right.
We actually will produce an extra, we sold it to the whole town.
Right.
So, given all the stuff we have for Dr. Dutch, so.
Yeah, they can put a Tesla, they can put a Tesla wall thing right up here, and they're in Jenkins, and they can use that for six classrooms, right, that wouldn't be against any policy.
Well, if you're already getting all your green energy, then you're gonna have to do a seat, evidence coming from green energy, you had a boy, you're gonna, right, I might not as stand as I said.
What's that?
Produce a hundred, but you only use ninety, you gotta sell that ten back, you're losing, you're not gonna use a hundred. No way. But the, the panels are gonna use everything for that school.
But we do a lot of other things, we, we make more than we use, like.
The, as we said, there's absolutely no way, any more of the, the additional power resources.
Right, so then we gotta figure out how much. What's the delta between what we're producing, what we're using, and how much will this produce and doesn't fit?
So, I guess my question is, why are we voting it if we're still kind of in the midst of trying to figure out what we're dealing with? Why do you even appropriate all the two million dollars?
Like, rent applications, we used to have. The authorization for the town is going to spend money for these other companies. And I don't understand this process, but. Money has, the town has to have a commitment before they'll commit a fair bill of labor.
It's been so.
Follow-up question, so, to take the whole solar conversation off.
Right, that's what we did.
They need a new roof.
Yes.
They wanna have it done this year, this year. So you wanna accelerate the capital plan to replace the roof, and does that mean just, are we in the windmill day of the month for MSBA?
Not yet.
Not yet.
That's why it's on the next year, because I gotta put it down, it's been bad.
Uh, so. Bad news scenario, or, I guess not bad news scenario, so if we authorize, recommend it's authorization, and it gets approved at the town meeting, and. Whatever scenario of, um, solar thing doesn't work out, we're not obligated to, we can, we can hold off on that until we be able to put a stake.
You're gonna have to authorize the file.
Doesn't mean we're gonna just give sense of tools, try to make videos out of it.
Which is why, again, why we took that, so, it has to be authorized for this process, for an SBA process. And ultimately, a contractor would have to come to us, and we would have to say yes, yeah. Your, your, the board is not our final power, you know, yes or no, it's not for us.
Yeah, so would be our contract, not for the school. Yeah, okay.
How are we paying for that? Is this all paid back?
Could be our, could be our, our assumption that we will forward Peter, the end of the initiative, so we're offering this forward, or would be a probably a fifteen to sixty percent reimbursement to the NSBA.
Any other questions, any questions in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
And our bottom ten days, so, the what was that?
My son was the first class kindergarten, he's twenty-four years old, twenty, fifteen, sixteen years old? No. That's about five, so five, nineteen.
I think nineteen, twenty-one? Twenty-nine? We just paid off the bond for the school, so it's either.
It's like twenty.
It's not, it's not yet eligible for MSBA.
It's like when you make the best car, kind of, then you get to the next car.
Or actually, his money already approved for repairs to that community, like, most in the last town meeting, so. We're not testing for, for that either.
Hey, did your question get answered or no?
Well.
I think it's nineteen, I think kindergartners are five, my son's twenty-four.
But it just seems interesting that, um, I would've thought it would last a little bit longer. It's just, it seems we're always producing. And we just replace that roof before we put the Jenkins down. Back in day.
We're not going back to day.
No, we're not, but we're going forward, thing is. How long was moving the rest?
Usually twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Generally, other than.
So, if we still have authority, that's.
That's why we upgraded the MSBA, but we're not here. So if you want to retire, you're eligible for MSBA. That's all the time, so the high schools this year, it's all the eligible. We're not gonna do the Jenkins until next year, because it's not eligible yet, excuse me.
Thank you.
Chris, they kind of add to his question, if they hook you, is the roof leaking, I mean, is it, is it just time or is it just repairs?
Came to us last town meeting, or last budget session, for money for repairs. Uh, so there are minor repairs that need to be done, I think she was already contracted to do repairs.
I'm sorry, just a question, is it minor repairs or repairs?
Minor, oh, minor.
Yeah, so.
They're doing minor repairs now.
It was on the fifth twenty-three capital plan before we went, but you know, it's now. Deferred to twenty-four because it wasn't an SBA out for that. And my, my high school was going forward instead.
Okay, any other questions on the road? Okay, so, Maura is gonna be a little bit later, so, I'm gonna ask the board, can we plow through these last three?
Who do we go get her?
Different age, huh?
Who do we go get her? Yeah, that's good.
She's not gonna be here, she said start without. So, do we still pick the last three?
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep going.
Take a quick issue.
Yeah. Do the, you guys wanna know about the police boat?
Only if it goes by the stairs.
So, the police department, uh. Police department came to us with a request for the town chair of a grant to purchase a new safe boat. Uh, requested for a hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred eighty. Police department has applied for a port security grant, a new safe boat replaces its counter marine unit. Grant would provide seventy-five percent funding of the five hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred eighteen dollar boat, including outfitting, radios, and things like that. Retired boat, BT plant, surplus, and sold at public auction, two parts would offset the cost. Funding source is free cash.
How old is that old boat?
We, I think we bought that when we used, uh, current boat is fifteen years old. Uh, the engines are brand new. Uh, it's being considered because of, uh, grant cycles. Salvage value, the current salvage value or sale value of that boat is between a hundred thirty and a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, it's ready to be captured. I'll pay for this. Uh. There is no expectation to keep two boats. And necessarily to conduct borrowing course, motion was to grant the borrowing authorization for a one forty-five seven eighty, from free cash. And what is what it is?
What do you got?
I'm Mr. Moskowitz, um.
Please go.
Please go.
The fact is, we don't apply for the grant, get the boat, we don't get the rent, we don't get the boat, so the life insurance is back. So, this is just to catch the grant cycle, uh, we feel pretty good that we'll get it. And, as Chris said in my first conversation with the chief, well, you get rid of the other boat, right? The old, the old boat, so we're not gonna have that.
But we don't really need it, but it's a good financial deal.
It, it's a good deal, we will need to replace that boat sooner rather than later, so if we're in line for that grant, we should take advantage of it. Then, at the same time, the other boat still has value to kind of pay off, pay off, in terms of portion of the grant, which is what it plans.
Just, what's the length on purchasing the boat?
Probably, probably check the models, it's probably at least a year from quarter to end.
And what we have is perfectly, perfectly functional.
Yes.
Karen, any questions?
Yeah, is, is there a way to use the almost brand-new engines on the boat?
The new boat will come with new engines?
Well, but if.
And that's the value of the old boat, it's really the engines.
It's the engines.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I'll just editorial-wise, I'm not entirely certain why we, it seems to be that not matter. Uh, we have a brand-new police boat, I mean, brand-new fireboat, we have the new harbor master boat, certainly, I guess. Uh, it, it just seems like it's a lot of boats out there.
Really, totally different jobs?
What is a police boat?
It is a police vehicle, it is a response, it's also a fastest boat for bad weather, we leave that in almost year-round. So that responds, it gets out there quickly, if you remember the incident in Egypt Beach a year ago. The harbor master boat left the harbor, the police officers got from the police station to the harbor, to the boat, and almost beat the harbor master to Egypt Beach. So it's a year-round boat, the harbor master boat, it's correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, or not, year-round boats.
Um, the unit three is.
The fireboat is, is a different boat. We call it sinking, the fireboat, that is just from the actual work that's on the boat, and it is for fires, which you actually did happen out.
But we probably have this, the police boat, for, um, ten years at times.
Uh, police unit's been six, eight, seven years, yeah, that boat has four, five, you have to kick those up.
And what, what happened before that, before there was a police boat and a police on the water?
Well, the problem you have now is the, is the police reform. To use police powers on the water, you must go through a police academy. Um, Steve's staff has not been to a police academy, so, the drinking, things like that, Steve's, although they have chapter ninety-one, Waterways Powers. Under the new police reform, they really can't do those things, and they don't do those.
You have to set that police boat out to spit to arrest people, whatever's going on.
Yeah, the, the police boat, and then we have a, uh, ATV that goes out there. And now, uh, the next number, go acid, because we picked only bad actors on the spin, like, you know, acid, you know, massive, you know, acid. So, we have to have a marine, a marine unit, because that's, no house can do their, their function right now.
It just seems like odd folks.
That's why we have to.
You have Admiral?
Get a, get a boat.
It can add, it's all, it's Admiral.
Don't add the boat, now you're talking. You've got ideas for that. Please, get me a boat.
Okay, so the boat, really, from my perspective, is gonna pay for itself, so we'll get a new boat if we do the re-act of itself, the old one. All right, we're not voting tonight, but any questions from the audience on the police boat? All right, how about the ambulance?
So the ambulance, uh, the firefighter's CP four hundred thirty-five, uh, seven hundred nineteen for a new ambulance, it has moved up one year in the capital plan. Because of the lead time to get, uh, this equipment, ambulance, it takes two years to get them from title purchase. So if we authorize this now, we'll receive it at the same time, have it waiting to swing down here. Uh, it has been a cost increase over his original request, obviously, replacement and everything, we do a minor increase.
How old is the one member who weighs?
Um. They do the rotation, so ultimately, this one gets, number one, everybody moves down, and when you're rid of that, I'm not familiar with that whole, the Ford town that we use, the white one. That would be the, uh, service, or it rotates now, I think that one's a hundred years old.
Any questions for Chris?
This one does that for a long time?
Two years, huge.
Two years, no.
Do you have anything to add on the, um?
No, I mean, I, I, usually I'm reluctant to move something up out of the regular capital schedule, uh, but given the lead time and the escalates cost of these vehicles. Would've been one of the first things I'd ask spring capital anyways, so, to move it up now is just proof of the lead time and escalates cost.
Any other questions about the ambulance from the audience? Nope. Bob, how are you?
I'm good.
How are you?
Good, I, I think we've already passed, you're here for the, uh, school roof, I assume?
Yeah, you're ahead of schedule.
You're ahead of schedule.
You have any questions?
Okay.
Here.
I think we discussed it, uh, a lot, you're, uh, doing some solar research.
Yep.
You need us to pass this in order to proceed?
All I hear.
Okay, anything else we should know?
No.
The roof isn't just repaired, needs to be replaced?
It, it does, we, for it, uh, just because it wasn't our local firm, SBA, but this presents an opportunity to do, uh, to do a little quicker, we'll follow the solar piece.
Great, and the only comment Chris Cantfield had was involving the facilities team as well, which I think Jim said you did. Any questions for Dr. Dutch? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, you don't have to.
All right, thanks.
All right, the last, uh.
Not all that easy.
It's a million dollars, hands a better. All right, the last, uh, item, item we're gonna discuss before the stairs is the, uh, emergency water treatment plant repairs, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So this is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, again, to say the same thing you just did, for emergency water treatment plant repairs. To provide funds for emergency repairs to the existing water treatment plant while we wait for our new one. Uh, we all know that we have the track back issue earlier this summer, so this is kind of the cost for those repairs.
All right, just a little bit to it. The, uh, water treatment plant, as you all know, is old and it's been breaking down, and that's why you're all gonna get town meeting, uh, to discuss the new water treatment plant in a couple weeks. Uh, what we need to do right now is to get this two hundred fifty thousand dollars in reserve, in case something major happens to it, that we actually have readily, funds readily available to fix something. Otherwise, we'd have to come to special town meeting and get money to do something, and we don't wanna be, have to recommend if our water treatment plant needs to be fixed, it's quicker than that. So Jim has requested that we put this on, and Nancy has requested we put this on, so that these funds are available. Uh, if they're not used, then we will put it back into, uh, old empty office. Any questions for anyone on the board about that?
Talked about it in life.
Great. Okay, um, Maura, just, I know you're getting here, I just didn't know if you had any specific questions on the capital plan regarding the arena docks, or the roof. The police boat, the ambulance, or the, or the water treatment.
No.
Chris, thank you, thank you for your group, uh, as usual, doing such a good job on this.
Not a problem, I have a great group this year, uh, expect bigger things from us.
Do you want to talk to me?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah. Dedicated.
We're gonna do this. Move on to the CPC. Sean, you wanna come up and talk about the. Northern construction emergency repair to Graves Road access stairs, up to the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Karen? Select one, um, let me, before you dive into it, I'll give a quick synopsis, we've already gone over this last meeting. We, Sean gave us an overview, already showed us the, the plans and the amount and everything, we chose not to vote at last meeting because we wanted, because none of you were here. And, um, we are really deciding what to do with that situation, we wanna give the public an opportunity to come and participate, so, that's why we postponed it for a week, to talk about it now. Um, I'll, Sean, I'll give you a quick second, I'm moving up here, and I won't allow you guys to, uh, participate after that.
I couldn't say that better myself, all right. Exactly, and I think this got some feedback, uh, I don't understand, quite better, uh, from some of the residents, but it was a meeting. I believe last weekend, uh, on-site, some residents, now, so maybe some information to that.
Karen, you wanna?
Sure, uh, the Cliff Notes on that last Saturday, uh, it's currently, I met with, uh, it was publicized with the Dorset Beach Room Association, which is a neighborhood association. In the beach area, um, and residents came for, invited them to see the plans. Um, and to discuss the contract that's going forward for decision tonight, um, it was, I, I think you would say twenty people-ish, okay?
More than that, man.
More than that, I, I can't tell. Or it's a few of you. Um, but, uh, as, as a result of that, the board, um, I'm sure they'll present, they, uh, they reached out now to our, I think, hundred and sixty-five members in the, in the association, and that would be that for a standard celebration.
Sean, can we have that, 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 that's for some other floor discussion.
Sure, just let people know they're in order.
Yeah, so, 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 so. So, yes. That's okay, um, so there are four access points, as everyone knows, actually, I think there's six, right, with the two, uh, ramps. Um, and the way that the E W did it and out was, um, they did one project, and then another one, and another one, and all four eventually. So that we could choose any one, one, two, three, or four projects. Um, the first one is. The first one is. What's, where are we calling the first one?
The basement.
Say it again.
Grasshopper.
Yeah, what's the street, what's street grasshopper?
Grasshopper.
Grasshopper, is the first one, so we can either just do grasshopper, or we can do the first and the second, the first alternate one, which is called.
Collar.
Collar. We can do the first two, or we could add the third one, which is.
Clip estates.
Clip estates, or we can do all four, which would add.
An orange peach.
An orange peach. Okay, so that's, what we have to decide now is, do we wanna do zero, one, two, three, or four?
And end that one?
In that one, right, you can't, you can't do one and four, you have to do one and two, one, two, and three, or one, two, three, and four. Based on the beginning. So having said, I'm gonna open the board first, if anyone has any questions for Sean?
I can.
Yes?
Can you explain to me, Sean, I just wanna understand, so in the, in the, in the situation, to start with staircase one, it's a hundred twenty thousand dollars, which is the estimate. Staircase two is two sixteen, I don't understand the monetary increments, do, I know it's based on the work that has to be done, but is that, are those monetary increments, like, flexible to be spread out across the entire project? Or is it we can only spend a hundred and twenty on staircase one, if you go on staircase one and two, we can only spend a hundred and twenty and two hundred and sixteen, like, what if, what if costs fluctuate once they get there, or?
It doesn't change orders.
Okay.
I don't know what they find.
Within the, in, W chamber, within the entire valley of the contract?
Change order, you can only go off a certain amount of the stash and everything, so. And then beyond several thousand dollars, a little bit of design mistake. I don't follow the design and ship there, something like that, but otherwise, for the most part, in a job like this, the conditions are fairly, um, like, see what they do, we might find out it's actually, uh, uh, we're still there, and very good to know that we've got the charges for that, but. For the most part, this should be a lot of, otherwise you're in this, this picture.
Correct, uh, yeah, everything's exposed from the, uh, there's probably a mobilization cost, excuse me, at the basement. The tally sheet does separate them, a hundred and twenty and ninety-six. The repairs do vary a little bit, some of them have already, um, been converted from a stair to a ramp, and that repair is gonna be easier and cheaper. That's the slight reduction between from staircase to staircase.
Just, just put, put the numbers into play, if we do one, Sean, you have me in front of you, if one is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if you do two, it's two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, you divide, if we do three, it's three hundred and seventeen. Three seventeen. Three seventeen, and if you do four, it's four ninety-two. So before we, wanna go to the audience and get some, some feedback before we kind of deliver all we wanna do? Anyone from the audience who wants to say anything? All of you showed up, you remember this?
Yes, uh, my name's Jim, I'm from the North City with the, okay, I have additional sixty-four signatures here, uh, if you gave me the question, six hundred and four. Thank you very much. I mean, the stairs are absolutely positively innocable. Anybody short of great physical shape cannot get on that beach. It is closed, um, anybody with any physical disabilities cannot get on that beach at all. If you sit, you were, you know, put a wheelchair where the post office used to be, that would be quite an undertaking, we're, uh, well rocked. But I mean, it's such a beautiful beach, uh, it's changing across it, closed, it's just, it's real eyesore and it's very dangerous.
Thank you, and that's why we asked Sean to come up for the, for the, so.
Can I just make a point, because I think we tried to make this very clearly with the residents as well, just, and maybe I'm wrong, but we're not making these stairs E D A compliant.
Correct.
Correct, okay, so let's just be very clear about that.
Or replaced.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
In repairs. Yes, sir, from the back, Richard Cotton, eighty-one Glades Road, I would add to what, uh, Jim said, that in order to get to the beach, there is the one public access, which is at the end of Gannan Road. The access, which is a right-of-way, goes to a private beach down by where the hotel was, that's in Slade Road, so there's really only one public access to the public beach. So repairing these would be, would, for not only the residents that are there in the neighborhood, but for everybody in the county uses the beach, you're being right there on Glades Road, I can tell you. Year-round, there are people from all over town use that beach. Just so I understand you, you're saying that the ramp on the far end, which is to the rock?
Not the ramp, the, the A D A, you know, blue, sorry.
Stash.
Thank you, ramp, map is a public right-of-way, but it goes to a private beach, that is not a public beach there. So if there, if you're looking at the way the public gets to the public beach, the only public access now, aside from the stairs, which are not really accessible, is at the end of Gannan Road, where Glades Road meets.
But people use that ramp, they're, they're able to go over that private beach.
Yeah, yeah, they have access, but it's, it's not true.
Check access.
But it's a fact.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, and then anyone there?
Uh, sixty-one Glades Road, it started right across from the ramp down to the beach. And I would say between the ice cream man coming down, and everybody that cannot access collar or grasshopper or clip estates, they're all jammed up there. And there's numerous opportunities and accidents, told them that there's just too many cars coming at the same time, this is the only way a family can reach the beach unless they access them. I just think it's a very dangerous situation, and I think because we need this other stairway, that this is just a horrible aspect of the place now. You know that the police come almost every hour, just see how this all takes, monitor the park, right in front of that area, just check this out, it's, it's a stoppage of safety. Thank you.
Well, um, before I go, I just wanna, here's what we really want from this, we know it's dangerous, we know it's in disrepair, we know it needs to be repaired. Our decision tonight seems to be, do we close off three of the entrances and fix one? Do we close off two of the entrances and fix two?
No, no. No, no.
I know, you guys live there, you want, but I'm just telling you what we're trying to figure out, do we spend a half a million dollars and fix all four? Or do we spend a hundred thousand dollars and close off three? So that's what we're going to, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about whether it's safe or unsafe, we, we all are on the same page there, we're trying to figure that out, so. So that's what I'm kind of looking for, I think we are looking for feedback that would say, yes, spend a half a million dollars, or spend a hundred thousand dollars, which is what's going to work there. That being said, Penny, you, can I just?
Yes, um, Penny Scott pipes, they do Phil Road, that's been a resident of Citrus since nineteen fifty, so I've been here for a long, long time. Years ago, you needed all the stairs. The beach, you get beach, all day, long high tide, low tide, you get the cliff hotel, you need it all. At this point in time, I could see doing one at the end of grasshopper, but the rest of them can now, and high tide, and in between tides, there's no beach there. So that, that's a lot of money to put, you have the staircases in, and we have very limited access to the actual beach. We used to have a beach at high tide, you still had a new beach or a cliff hotel. That doesn't happen anymore, so I just really don't understand why we put in stairs farther down by where Suzanne's guest house used to be. When we don't have beach all day long, you know, and, um, to me, that just doesn't make any sense. Where I could see a grasshopper, and instead of spending money on stairs, I would like to see the end of road screwed up. Because there is a big step down there. You know, and, um.
Again, road is nowhere to park.
Sir, just.
Well, no, but there's no way to pack all of one, the beach, until, till you get down by the rocks. Okay, there's where the parking lot's at, and the parking lot, I, I mean, I've been here. And I was a little bummed. I understand what you're saying, but.
Thank you.
I understand what you're saying, but.
Okay, the chances are.
It's just. I just would prefer to see the end of made better, safer, if you can, that's accessible to people, but in just one split, it's not up to that. Can you see?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
And we're buying, and I just go. But. I would do all, and the reason I would do all of these stairs, and I understand what Penny is saying, and in certain extent, I agree with her, whatever. Do one, and then you use your own road, and then another, across the stuff. Let's just do it once, do all, and done. And it's really, it's up to tomorrow meeting to decide whether or not we wanna spend a half a million dollars on the beach. It's our choice. Let me do this, a half a million dollars on the beach.
What's the actual number? Four ninety-four. It's all sports, that's what it's.
Thank you, Anne. Um, someone had, yes, sir?
From friendly, uh, seventy-one Glades, um, you know, I just wanna say, well, uh, we have a dog, we walk that beach all season. Uh, and being able to go up and down the stairs, it was tremendous actually, uh, for a lot of. Uh, it's not just hard to, I mean, there's different sections of the beach that are, uh, tr- uh, available at different tide heights. Uh, and, uh, I, many times where we get, walk down, you know, just be able to walk up and go down in a stairway, because, uh, we have to get by an area. Uh, that's the only beach where you can actually walk any, any distance, it's a tremendous resource. And these are, I think we should be, one, these are access stairs, it's a public access. According to the P W G B A report, Massachusetts has fifteen hundred and eighty miles of coastline, and only twelve percent of that is public access. And we should do everything in our power to maintain public access for public beach, if that's a beach resource.
Yes, I, you know, I would agree with you, Chris, I, I agree with you. I meet people long beach, I walk there every day, I meet people not really neighbors, people constituent, they can come to my beach to walk along that beach. And it's not always just out, where the tide's at, it's beautiful, it's, but I know the money for the town, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. Like, you have a lawsuit, or you have someone that gets seriously hurt on those stairs, and it's very dangerous, go down there, walk up those stairs, if you have someone that's, that is hurt there, it will cost the top woman in terms of, of just some really hurt.
Yes, sir?
Uh, Rich Jay, thirty-nine Glades Road, um, this is a great opportunity, and one, I wanna thank all the pain and design work that has gone on today, that brought us here tonight, really appreciate that, very thorough and informative. Uh, I will say, the Glades, Glades Road, uh, it's really clear, the stairs are part of the infrastructure of Citrus, and it's below standard. It's a great town, it's very well maintained, it's appreciated in all the ways that it's been described, and this would be part of, part of that. And, uh, as far as the use of it and everything, you know, in Glades Road, there are, there are people walking their dogs, there are walking people, there are people fishing. There's all sorts of things going on, on a regular basis, and access, access matters, so, all, all, so it's, it's really treasured. And, uh, as far as, uh, you know, there was this whole discussion on the inconvenience, I think I skipped your most of my neighbors, I. We'll take whatever inconvenience to do all four in a row, if that takes three months, then it, whatever it takes, I think we're, we're deeply in favor of getting the whole job done once, my experience as a storm engineering officer. Once you get all the resources and the planning design and permits, and you get the, uh, get the team on site and materials, you should just go for it. This is, now's the time, so I really appreciate your consideration and would ask that the company approve it all.
Listen, I know, um, I feel like I need to say something, but everybody has said everything I was gonna say, um, clearly, and, and so there's a whole lot more of it. In there thirty years, um, up until maybe, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, I could go down our stairs, but the stage road, um, granted, I know basically pointing that, we just walk to other areas, which is great, but. I got used to for at least ten years walking down the stairs, um, and it would really be great for all of us to be able to walk down the stairs, um, and, because I'm not just going up the stage. But for years, I see people bringing their kids or, and they drop them off at all the stairs, they don't, they don't live in mine, if they come from other areas, even maybe that in Citrus. And they drop them off at all the, the stairs and now they're down. Penny, as for the point, the tide's definitely changed in thirty years, however, that beach is very small, everybody's still going to the beach, it's a beautiful beach. And I just, uh, I, like I said, everybody said everything I was gonna say, but I hope you do all for it.
If you're saying something, if you have something new to say. I'm gonna go Chris behind you, that's like, you wrap it up.
Chris Carson, my nineteenth Stocker Road Capital Plan Committee, the first-time member, have you seen this, or is this not, thanks for this?
It's not, it's not a town meeting article, it would be used from previously approved forms of the project plan.
Yep. The recommendation on a project like this would be to do them all, because of cost escalation, because of them, so.
But of course, you're speaking for yourself. Mike, you wrap it up?
Mike Corbin, six-eight, Lipper State Road, um, it's all been said about each individual staircase, the beach in general, I'll take it from a macro level. The, the coastline defines Citrus, and anything along that coastline is an asset of Citrus. It establishes our identity, establishes our value. For us to have neglected these staircases for as long as we have, shame on us, now's the opportunity, in my opinion, for short money, I realize four hundred and nine thousand dollars isn't short money. But with regards to how long these stairs have been neglected, to get this project done all at once, and put it behind us as a town, and put it in, back in need, we are proud of this asset that defines who we are. I don't understand why we're even talking about this, to be honest with you.
Thank you all for your feedback. All right, uh, anyone wanna start some discussion up here? You want me to? Go ahead.
Um, I appreciate everyone being here, I especially appreciate everyone on Glades Road, um, I will say, I think, uh, this does nothing to improve access for all people. It improves access for people who are able to walk up and down stairs. Um, I personally would rather see that we spent this kind of money at the northern end of Glades Road, that area, to provide access for all, to that, to, to that section of the beach. I agree with Penny, I agree that, uh, the entrance, the Gannan Road entrance, really needs to be addressed, I was down there the other day, if you're handicapped, you can't even get there, because it goes right up to a big bunch of sand. That's the, uh, the Gannan Road, um, I think there is no parking anywhere, um, along the side streets or along Glades Road, for anybody else, and the only place you can park is down in the parking lot. And I feel as though if you're able to park enough, to go up and down stairs, you should be able to wind enough to walk down to Glades Road, and depending on where you are in the neighborhood, so are Glades Road. Walk a couple hundred yards to the right to go down to Gannan, do the same thing if you're coming out of grasshopper. I, I, I can't, I think it's not fair to spend this kind of money and not provide access for all. And if you think you really want this, then I would suggest that we allow.
And if you think you really want this, then I would suggest that we allow parking on a seasonal basis along Glades Road, so that people from Citri with a beach sticker can park along that road, it's a one-way road in the summer anyway, and let people with a beach sticker park there, and then I would take the, the parking area near the Gannett Road entrance, make that handicap, do the same at the other end. And then I just feel like people should be able to have access to those beaches, and I, I also think, um, we have other seawalls in town that are in serious condition, including the one, including the one, uh, at, at Cedar Point. And if that, that is in really rough shape, you could go look at it. And I'll conclude by saying that, uh, it just seems to me as though you start on these things, and you never know what you're gonna find. And you don't know when you went and did that little pocket park at the end, the mine at parking lot, it turns out the, the work we did down there undermined the seawall in front, which is why we then had to bring in the contractor to shore it up, which is why the contractor wound up down on that beach, which is then where, oh, well, we're here, let's go down and take a look at what else we might do. So. I don't want to stomp the garden part, but.
So you would recommend none, or one, or?
I would recommend two. Uh, the northern end and Gannett Road is not on this, but I would rather see that being substantially better.
Thank you. Ramp or the staircase?
Well, the, the ramp, the ramp.
That is, yeah, we've, we've, we've done some iterations to see how the PDA compliant we can make, because it's under, uh, FEMA repair. Seventy-five percent of our cost will be reimbursed.
And currently, we, we're, none of this qualifies for FEMA repair, correct? Um, and how much did we put in the capital plan for foreshore protection for mine?
Not for the FEMA for mine?
We put in the capital plan foreshore protection mine, that's the category.
Is foreshore, this foreshore protection FEMA, the FEMA repairs for mine? It's not something specific just to mine? It's just foreshore protection?
So I'm in foreshore protection, but I see mine, that's the FEMA. Excuse me. That's the FEMA part of it?
Is it, yes, it's a, it's a mine.
But when we say foreshore protection, you mean the seawalls, right?
It means that foreshore protection, we nourishment, that's not the project down there that, that.
We have no money for that. Right. Well, it's just, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where this money is coming from, what pot of money is coming from?
It would come from multiple years' worth of foreshore protection, um, organizations.
Uh, I think every year we put in two, three, four hundred thousand dollars into the streets, into the seawalls, and I think that's what's coming from, right?
And where is that money?
So, uh, the capital plan, so we have tons left over from the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Um, that adds to about six hundred and nine thousand dollars. About a hundred eighty thousand dollars in the foreshore portion of the roads and seawalls money, we wanted to use that.
So we're talking about using half of that just for this? I think that's all. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say it's not the one that, that caused this, and I'd like for us to understand better, you know, do we put more money down than we're to, and not all four? And then I also wanted to hear from the residents. And there's no doubt that everybody, I understand you're E D, I'm equal, it's not gonna happen, that, that all these four stairs, and I think four stairs do need to be replaced. Uh, it does allow more access for more people easier, that you can walk to the air, but I, I'm in favor of doing all four. Um, like, the way I understand this contract being written, we, we can't really check it, other than the order that evidence here today. Um, so. I'm not in favor of just doing the two center, because I do think the, the end staircases also needs to be addressed as well. Um, and, you know, the high tide, yeah, it's, it's high tide, and it's high tide everywhere, all our beaches have less beach. Um, but the number of people that access the beach during, uh, boat tide, and, you know, I got from mine, and I go two or three times a week, because it's one of the best places to walk your dog, right? And there's people all over town that, that do take advantage of, so I don't look at this as a. I don't look at this as a, a mine issue, I can, that's a real issue, and, and this is a drop in the bucket for the hundred million dollars worth of repair. For the town, we have so many projects, so this is, uh, moving forward, so I'm not putting in favor of doing all four.
Yeah, so. I'll say that the answer, I'm, I'm in favor of all four, whereas in perfect destiny, I do want to say that it, I say that it's imperfect in the sense that it does give me great pause to vote for something that wouldn't be fully E D compliant. Um, because. And I would support this, to do that would be over a million dollars, that's still important, doing that to make sure we have access. And that was my pause to hear, would it make more sense financially to, to make sure there was one in the middle that had another set of that, and if it costs more? Personally, fine, but. It, this is, to me, this is imperfect, and I understand, and I agree with, as some said, the, um, doing this all at once. Scale is, is gonna save us money, but I do, I do applaud that, I think, yeah, thank you for bringing, that, for us to have that forefront of our mind. Um, that we have to continue down that path to be sure that everyone has that access, and that's, again, my, my pause was, but. So just thank you for giving that.
Yeah?
Um, okay, I will, I, we talked about this last week, I just want to bring up some things that we have not mentioned tonight that I think are very important in the decision for us, which is whether or not to approve this contract, and so to what extent, uh, in the whole or in part. That's what we have a choice for us today. Um, I think, um, that the engineering department has been looking at this project for many years, uh, not just this project, ultimately, for an asset to manage. Uh, and that. We have just completed a master plan, um, we're breaking up the organization of the master plan, and the number one asset to the community is our nature, our water. And, uh, as we pointed out over many, many comments tonight, that this is one of our largest assets, and it benefits many people in town. I, we live in the neighborhood, I walk there every single day. And, uh, as people have pointed out, I get to run into people from all over the town who use that ass, that beach. The parking lot, uh, is not just full on summer days and holidays, it is full all the time. Uh, so there's a well-used asset, um, and we plan, this engineer plan, and finance, and money's approved to expand that parking lot. I don't remember how many lots, the money's positive, but we are in the process of increasing access to that beach. Um, I think as a contract negotiation, and our, uh, uh, application is, uh, we've already talked about the economies of scale. If we, um, have the permits, and we have the contract, and we have the players in place to come and do this work, I think it's kind of bullish not to maximize the contract while we're there. I also think that if we choose to afford not to do all four stairs, uh, with the economies of scales of this contract with frame, that we would need to allocate more resources to better secure those chairs that we are not using, uh, and that will cost money. I have the knowledge it is, Sean probably guessed in it, but we'd have to start that whole process, and, um, they, they really are unsafe. Uh, and the strength over, you know, a chain over them is, is not, doesn't reflect well on us, and it does open us up to, uh, um, concern to public safety. Uh, the last thing I want to mention on this is, um, last week, we asked the question, what else could we use this fund for? This is recommended by our engineers, and it's recommended by our D W department as a useful allocation of our financial resources. Uh, and I, I, uh, I had a lot of faith in Nancy crunching the numbers, and that this is something that, um, you know, we had alternate spending on the table right now. Um, you know, I asked my question last week, it's like, I'm, I'm a big proponent of fixing these, because they've been unsafe, and I've watched it my whole life in, in Citri. Um, and this is what's on the table, and what's available, and I've been wondering for, and I think it is appropriate to do all four. Um, and I, there's one more thing I wanted to say, which I don't know. And I, I will support doing all four for those reasons, and I think it supports the overall plan for the town as well.
Thanks. So I'll wrap it up by saying, A, I don't think we need four staircases, personally, but B, it's in the wrong order. You know, if we could do the two on the end, and I would say do the two on the end, but we can't. Uh, so. So that's just a fact. Um, I do believe that if we don't fix it now, we're never gonna go back. No one's gonna say, oh, let's, we fixed two of them, let's go fix those other two, you know, there's gonna be too many other projects in town that are going to get ahead. Um, so there's, there's somebody to do, if you're there, you're not gonna go back and fix the other two, there's just gonna be isolation requests. And I do think that the costs are gonna just increase, as I've seen for twenty-seven years, I've noticed, and it's keep going up and going up and going up. So it's, uh, that being said, uh, because of the order of it, and because of the fact that it'll just never get done, you know, but now, I, I also believe we should do all four now. And, uh, with that question, thanks. So. Does anybody else, I don't, I know, anyone have any thoughts, not you guys?
Well, I'm just, I, you know, I, I, I can see the way this is going, which is fine, um, but I do want us to bring up the issue of parking down at Glades Road.
So that'd be another.
Karen's concerned about the ramps, and Sean said that's a FEMA project for working on. It's just really complicated. I think, the neighbors correct me, this year, the mine's about the best sand condition I've seen in a long time. Now they had to get it, and that ramp has sand. Last year, it was a two, three-foot drop, because there was no sand, so it's just, it's take, it's taken a while, it's a complicated engineering, maybe because FEMA moves slower than a slop.
We're gonna say that's.
We're, we're working on that also.
If we could save the parking issues for another day, I'd have to put it on the agenda, because then more people, it would be seasonal, just from like, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day, it would be dawn to dusk, or whatever hours work, and it free up some extra space near those beaches, people can be able to walk down, using those stairs, that, and I, like I said, I, I would like to make more handicapped parking areas. I know what I'm saying may not be popular, but. Thank you for shushing. Um, I, I would just like to make the beach more accessible to more people in town.
All right, so, Moore, can we make a motion for this?
Yes.
Part one, I.
I can.
We'll talk about that another.
Move to a more, a contractor, the more December repairs to create further access stairs to Northern Construction Services, I will see, for a total sum of, I should see four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Second?
Second, my name's Cancel, further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, five zero.
If we can park them down there, we can.
Five thousand zero seconds. All right, thank you.
You guys are gonna stay around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd want to adjutant, uh, for the special town meeting to review our six, which are the C P C, the FEMA projects, if you can, you can share.
Thank you.
Lost my crowd.
You have more people behind you than we do, you know? There's millions watching on television. So we've got before us, um, eight, I see, C P C articles to discuss with the special town meeting.
There's seven now. So we had, we had our meeting last night. Uh, originally, we had nine, uh, applications, we, one was ineligible, and that was for beach nourishment, but sand. Uh, sand is not a permanent structure, so you can't use that, uh, C P C money for beach nourishment in that sense.
It's the very definition.
Um, and, uh, the Wheeler Windows Replacement Project, we take, we don't have enough information on that as of last night. So we have, uh, seven projects, I'm not going to go through the financials, but I included them, uh, for your perusal. Uh, we do have about five and a half million dollars in funds, about two point seven, two point eight of that are allocated or already spent, and we have about two point seven remainder that we have ability to access. I'm not going to go through all those numbers. Uh, the state match went up to eight hundred thousand dollars last year, which was very significant, um, I'm not sure it's gonna go up that high again this year. The, uh, there was some expectation by the CPA Coalition in Boston that it was gonna be some very good news first, but Governor Baker, uh, pulled back on budget approval, and that hasn't been done yet. Regardless of that, uh, we will anticipate getting about one point eight million dollars in revenue from the town through the taxes, and another four, at least four or five hundred thousand dollars in state match that we're expecting for this year. So when you look at the numbers, uh, we'll end up with one point four million dollars, uh, total for the funds that we have, and that includes, uh, hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in historic reserve, thirty-eight thousand in open space reserve, one point oh eight six thousand in, uh, million, in, uh, community housing reserve, and the undesigned fund balance would go down to about a hundred thousand dollars.
And Dan, that's after the, if all of these pass?
If all of these pass, the town meeting.
One other question, which one of the two window projects got, got tabled?
It was the Wheeler Estates project.
Number three.
Yes. So that, uh, we removed completely off until, uh, next meeting. The, we need to have a more complete quotes and, and explanation on the application, so we weren't able to approve that last night. And my feeling was, uh, it would be too late to try and get that into the September meeting, particularly when everything is pretty much due today. For the, for the town meeting information. So we have seven projects, uh, both of each, each one of them separately. Uh, the first one, certainly the largest one that we have, is the ninety-foot, ninety-foot baseball field construction. As you may recall, this was, uh, the second ninety-foot baseball field was eliminated when the high school field project was implemented. And, uh, there wasn't a decision at the time, there were a variety of reasons, uh, there were a lot of things up in the air at the time, so there was no decision on where we could put, uh, a second ninety-foot baseball field, and, uh, what has happened since then is we have about a hundred and fifty players that are playing on one field and practicing, it presents some serious scheduling problems. And, um, we'd like to get it back to where it was before, where we had two ninety-foot baseball fields in town for practice and play. The, uh, location design was, was decided by a committee, um, including the rec department and other stakeholders. They involve not just baseball and softball people, but soccer, other youth sports that use, uh, both Central and, and I'll call it Gates Field. And it was decided by that group to locate the new field at Central, so I'll call it Central South. At the same time, there was some opposition, if you will, to. At the same time, there was some opposition, if you will, to losing a softball field because of the increase in adult softball, and men's softball, if you will. Um, so, one of the compromises that they came up with was to locate a softball infield on the, uh, south side in the outfield of the baseball field. So that could keep the status of the softball for the adults' softball games the same, they still have the same number of fields. They'd still be able to use the field. And we would have the infield of the ninety foot baseball field located on the western side, I believe, of the, well, of the south field. Uh, one point I'd like to make, I'd like to, one item I'd like to, uh, point out is that in two thousand seventeen, there was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars allocated by CPC for, uh, repair, if you will, and reconstruction of this south field, this central field. And it was rescinded because the, uh, the project was stalled and various other things happened. So, the project never happened, and that hundred and thirty thousand was rescinded. So this isn't something that we're, we're trying to come up with a whole new, uh, nine hundred thousand for, if you will. We still have the hundred and thirty thousand that was rescinded back to CPC. So the, uh, estimated cost is nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, that does include the softball field that you see on the top of the diagram there. And it also includes, uh, down that little, uh, arrow in the bottom right, uh, bottom middle of the field. It includes the scoreboards for both, uh, JV softball field and the bar, and the ninety foot baseball field. Where there are two, the intention is to have two scoreboards located there, so both fields could use the scoreboards. The other thing I'd point out is by adding batting cages, that also benefits the girls softball field, which is in the left-hand corner of the picture. Uh, that they'll be able to utilize that, as well as some other resources that would be provided for storage and kitchen lamps and things like that. And this was unanimously voted for by the committee last night.
Mark, do you have anything to add? Are you here for that, Mike?
Yes, Mark, Mark is the man.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to add that, uh, the way we're structuring currently the bid documents for the project is to have the softball field in the north. Uh, along Grant Street, the new softball field, the, uh, alternate number one. And then alternate number two, uh, will be the scoreboards. We're, we're asking for the full nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, we're hopeful that that will cover the whole project, but in the current construction climate and volatility that we're seeing out there right now, uh, we wanted to make sure that we had the flexibility. Alright, so that doesn't mean that if, you know, we go a little bit over the budget, you know, it doesn't happen. I think we just can, we can fix the recipe in order to make sure we get the whole scope covered. Uh, that's just a, a point of clarity, uh, you know, very important to us that we see both of those infillings filled. We are in the middle of, uh, designing it, we just received a survey for it, uh, about three weeks ago. Um, so we've been in front of CPC, we're gonna be going in front of advisory on Thursday night. Uh, we will be going to planning board because this is over fifteen thousand square feet of disturbance, uh, we'll have to go for a stormwater permit. Um, so that'll be another chance to review this in front of the public. And we'll also be having another community meeting, uh, assuming you're approval, uh, to lead us to town, special town meeting on the next.
Mark, can I just ask you, uh, the netting that you're gonna have?
Yep.
Behind, was that, is that gonna be subsidized?
So the, yes, right now, we're calling for a netting system backstop at baseball, at softball, we're just calling for a twenty-four foot high changing backstop. Um, in addition to the netting, uh, at the actual backstop area, we're gonna have twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty foot high netting that'll run down to Westfield. To provide some additional protection, uh, for foul balls and. Any questions?
How does this impact soccer?
Good question. Um, so Michael Foley, uh, was situating soccer, was a part of working group. Um, and when we started the study looking at both recreation and central field, uh, we basically laid the ground rules, we said, hey, listen. You know, adding a baseball field to an existing, uh, athletic field here in town is going to create some pain. And the whole task here was to limit the pain to the extent practical for each group, alright? Um, soccer will still be able to use this, uh, they can fit a regulation field running from Grant Street to Central Park Drive, uh, to, until it's still coming down from the parking area. Uh, and that was their biggest concern.
Is it like for recreation?
Mark Lancy was.
Where are we, where are we playing soccer these days? We're playing in Adelaide and Central and.
And recreation. Recreation.
And in the back.
Yeah.
By, uh, decades.
Yeah.
And turf.
Yeah, because there would be four games going on there, Saturday, weekly.
Yeah, and same thing with situated, uh, across, you know, they said it's gonna cause them a little bit of a headache if it were to be over at recreation. No, they don't use Central too much. Um, but I think all the groups came together and they said they understood the need, um, and then they, they can work with, you know, Westfield.
What other, what other question that came up, and it's really a question to you folks, is the four hundred thousand dollar old brothers funds that my understanding was allocated or was supposed to be given to the town for construction of a recreation field? Uh, and I'm not sure where that stands right now.
Yeah, actually, the question I had. I was expecting you to answer that question instead.
That's a fact.
To me, um, is it, uh, registered turf, it's not?
No, it's natural grass, and, um. To answer your question, I know irrigation these days is a four level work, um, I think that's something that, you know, if we're gonna be spending, you know, close to a million dollars on an athletic field. There is irrigation currently in the ground and central, um, so. Ken?
I, my, my recognition is if there is a parking system, we can use it.
That's my understanding of it as well. Uh, we're gonna have to.
We have to a big problem of, we might push this rule because we thought there was, then there wasn't, and then the well, but then there wasn't, and now that field is a mess, and, um, so.
So, the irrigation system will do need to be modified, so, um, obviously with cutting in the, and the new infield and rate changes and whatnot.
Same.
It is, yes. Um, but that will be critical, uh, to the success of the project. Uh, we're gonna do what we can, uh, in terms of modifications to the soil profile, uh, most specifically, uh, increasing the organic content in the soil. Um, typically, you wanna see between a four and eight percent, uh, organic content for water holding capacity. And we're gonna try to get that up as close to eight percent as we can, so whatever falls from the sky, uh, you know, is held in the soil instead. But, you know, with SOF, uh, so that our student athletes and our children can get out on the fields, and, and our seniors, you know, the entire community can get out on the fields as quickly as possible, we're going with SOF. Uh, and we're gonna need to irrigate it.
So we're not touching the area of the field that we just did a few years ago, where we had drainage problems and where I know that there are still a few issues related to, um, the library and possible things, so. So that's not being touched.
No, we're gonna try to minimize the footprint to the extent practical. Um, you know, you do have a decent standard of rest out there, um, so I don't wanna, you know, really, we're gonna try to hold it to anywhere between twenty to forty feet beyond, I think, uh, in two of them. Uh, in order to just land a transition, isolate it to exist. The one thing that we will be doing, as Dan mentioned earlier, down by the, uh, more recently renovated softball field, is the addition of the batting cage.
Number six or four, what do you have to mention?
Uh, number four, yeah, and originally, we started with two batting cages, uh, down the right field line of baseball. Uh, but from a tighter nine and gender equity perspective, it was the right thing to do.
No, my question's about soccer, which, uh, answer, usually that's very happy with four.
Yeah, they, they had a lot of debate over that, so.
Yeah.
And like Mark said, you know, they all believe that this is, it's in for all the audience.
I mean, we're not gonna be getting, you know, a full size two twenty-five by three hundred and sixty foot field in there, uh, but it will be a high school regulation size field. Not the smallest, but it's.
And do you have to repair the current irrigation system then?
It's gonna be a combination of repair and review. Uh, you know, one of the things also that came, uh, through our first community meeting was a concern about the dust of infield nets going out to other projects. Uh, so in our attempt to address that, we're looking at a, a very specific infield mix that has a low sill content. Uh, sill is what really creates dust in infield nets. Um, but also, we're gonna have a high-speed irrigation zone, uh, that goes around the infield, uh, to give it a quick blast. Um, common misconception about working fields is you wanna keep water off of it, you really wanna keep it moist, um, that's how they, uh, stay playable and, uh, don't turn to concrete and they don't turn it to dust.
That's a big, a big. Any questions from the audience, Tom?
Um, if I could, I believe we got an answer to the question on.
Wait, 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 we're, we're not gonna get an answer, okay? As we've talked about, yeah. Can you put on the agenda for next meeting for us to discuss the twelve brothers meeting, Mark? Can you say that? Like, any discussions on the field? Great, thanks, guys, thanks for.
Thank you very much.
Number two. Thank you, the next project is, uh, what I'll call the Cushion Trail Restoration, so if you could go to the next slide, woman. Um, in between the, uh, Cushion School and basically Utility Road, there's an existing path that has been in somewhat of disrepair. It's about eleven hundred feet long, uh, it's been there, it's quite, I wouldn't say heavily used, but it's quite frequently used by, uh, people going to school, to the high school from the other neighborhoods. And going to and from Cushion Elementary School. This was an application that was submitted by a private citizen, uh, who's been working for eleven months on this, uh, trying to, uh, assist, get assistance from DQW. And finally was able to get some estimates of the cost of this. So this would be, uh, maintaining the trail that's there right now, repaving it, it is a paved trail, uh, it is approaching being hazardous. And, uh, the restoration would make it a safe walking trail between the two locations. The estimated cost, uh, that they were giving was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and, uh, Horse Engineering gratefully donated twenty thousand dollars of their services to help with the project. So they're asking for CPC for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would be funded by Open Space, and it was unanimously approved by CPC.
So my mind says estimated forty thousand dollars.
That was, no, that was a number that was just thrown out, um, you, you have an old version.
Just look at the article, okay?
Yeah, so, uh, what happened, we had a meeting last night that a lot of these, we didn't have complete information on before last night. Uh, frankly, I threw the forty thousand in there because I had no idea, I just put a number in there, uh, without any information. So the, uh, the estimate that came back, we do think is very conservative, but it was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, suited enough with some contingency built in as well.
What? Do you want me to ask any more?
Yeah, always. Well, do we know how that compares on a per foot basis versus what we spend on state, we'll just pick something with the, uh, uh, final phase of the countryway? Do we have any?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Um, and I know cost of.
It's hard, but really the distance and how much per foot?
Well, it, it can't be longer than that countryway continuation of that, it can't, is it countryway a sidewalk though? Yeah, but that, that's what I'm saying, a sidewalk would be more expensive on a per foot, but I don't know how this compares if you do it on a per foot basis, some people do that.
Is that one setting?
Yeah, it was eleven, about eleven hundred feet.
So what are they actually doing? What, what is, what are they doing for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
Basically repaving the, uh, regrade, somewhat regrading and repaving the existing path that's there now.
So it's not dirt right now, it's, uh, it's asphalt?
It is, it is asphalt right now, but.
Yeah, it's stuff.
Uh, you can see the, the picture on the right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Uh, I'm not sure when the last time it was paved, but it was quite a long time ago.
So they're gonna actually put a, essentially a sidewalk, that whole.
A walk, a walking path.
Oh, a sidewalk.
Okay, walking path.
I wouldn't vote sidewalk.
So, and I'm just, I asked the question.
So Mike, how about the basis, just so we got the answer?
Jim, do you have any sense on, it seems very expensive.
Yeah.
It's gonna be way less than sidewalk though, because there's no grain and curbing.
Right.
Main cost of the side.
I asked, excuse me, Mr. David, Amber by ten feet of this road, and when all this was sort of rolling around, all of this, I asked DQW that we needed a number for this trailer. This is fifty thousand, which sounded a little bit more realistic to me, but it's committed through Edwards at a hundred and seventy thousand, because nobody would get it in, not a deep, writing on a deep level. Who, who, I'm sorry, I meant should be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, did you say Edwards? Yes, who is it?
It's Edwards.
Okay, just, uh, just.
Can we get multiple bits?
We'll have to bid.
This will, this will have to go out a bit.
Getting an estimate.
So again, this is an estimate to get a budgetary number to go to town.
Yes.
Scotty, Skyler, and, uh, Kane Brown, CBT vice chair. Um, on this particular one, the hundred and seventy thousand dollars, twenty thousand is engineering work from the works, that's what comes out, but, um, a hundred and fifty thousand includes about twenty thousand or so extra labor construction capacity. So the actual work is, the contract has to mobilize, demobilize the site, you know, protect it, public use during construction, they have to remove the existing pavement, they have to excavate it. They have to do reeding, they have to bring in base material, new asphalt, from a cost perspective, um, of the time industry present in that industry. It's about six dollars per square foot to pave asphalt with the stone base. So at eleven hundred, a linear feed by about eight to ten feet wide, you're talking almost seventy thousand dollars just for the asphalt paving. So you add to that, the deep, uh, mobilization, demobilization, construction fastening, the early work, all those things, so. I think from an industry perspective for a publicly bid project using private wages, that is about basically what we're waiting for for this time. That was my assessment, I mentioned that last time in the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, at the beach, can you get Kevin's opinion on, on that? Uh, I'm not sure Scotty's numbers are right, but what is, what is the, um, you know, every project is gonna have engineering, we just have to get it free. Every project has to put up fencing and its stuff, so.
The, the big cost about sidewalk projects is grain curbing, it's really a big cost. You've put a hundred and fifty, eleven hundred square feet in sidewalk, I'm not being, probably all.
Hundred and fifty, yeah.
Well, what they, what they're doing, that's not. You know, beyond the pale, because they're basically doing a full depth reconstruction. It's not just a, this is just an overlay they're bringing in a truck, putting down a wall of asphalt on say, that's way beyond. And what Scotty was describing is, is that's a full depth reconstruction, that's figuring it all out, bringing in fill and stone. It's not, I'll do another shot of numbers tomorrow, um, but based on what he's telling me, I don't think that's beyond the pale for what, what's gotta be done.
Yeah, I, I may have missed this, but, so when was this originally, did the town originally name this?
Yes.
Yes.
That in the old days, right?
Oh, right, all of this.
Just sent someone up through some asphalt.
Not sure when the path was created.
But it's a walkway from, it looks like two names. But it's a walkway from, it looks like two neighborhoods to get to the two schools.
Yes.
Is that?
Yes, it's at the end of Utility Road and then comes out, um, on, uh.
And that right at the school.
Aberdeen, that's actually, well, it doesn't.
Doesn't connect to the high school, it's just gonna connect to the pushing.
No, it also connects to the high school.
Yeah.
Get out there.
Yeah, so you can go from this neighborhood to Cushion or this neighborhood to the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Is it an official access to the high school or is it just sort of a break to against kind of thing?
It's trespassing.
Close.
It's real. What? Yeah, there is?
Some, some people have actually made a mistake if ever they can.
Yeah, okay.
Mistake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have to ball his hands initially, it's also. Stop.
Don't look at me, I mean.
That's right. Just stay there. Yeah, so not the first time you've shot by the price of something. Any other questions on this? Any comments from the audience? Got to.
I just, for some reason, those constellations, whatever, I walked at last year, looking at it to see if it was a viable thing to do and it is in pretty tough shape. Um, but it's been used for fifty years. It can take from ten to fifteen floors and second grade to get to the neighborhood instead of one.
All right, the next one's a beach commission?
Yeah, uh, mobi-mats. Uh, these are basically to replace the mobi-mats at the entrance to Sand Hills Beach. Uh, they, essentially the same mobi-mats that we currently have that DPDW puts out in every year at all the beaches that were purchased with CPC funds. A couple of years, I think three or four years ago, maybe from committee. Uh, the cost, uh, they did get formal quotes on this and the cost includes materials, shipping and handling at fifteen percent contingency, anticipating the cost might go up in the next several months. And, uh, basically coming out of undesignated funds and unanimously voted for by the committee.
Any questions on this?
Yeah.
Um, the only comment I'll make on this is, and we, we talked about this with some of the other stuff. You know, special town meeting is supposed to be for urgent things, not for just general. We talked about this the other day. You know, this is one that probably could have been on the annual town meeting unless it's a long lead time to get, to get it, that would say we wouldn't have it for next summer. So I, I just think, and we, we talked about dealing with that after this special town meeting. We're really trying to set parameters of what we wanna do in a meeting that much fewer people attend to and it's really supposed to be for special stuff, but maybe there's a lead time that says that we wouldn't have it for next summer if we, if we didn't do it now.
Well, it's a pretty simple one. Uh, the other comment I would make is that it has been very beneficial to committee to be able to split up the applications over two, two meetings rather than, uh, I, we, we just got two or three, I'm, I'm trying to think right now. For example, we knew this yesterday would be the last meeting that we would have before the special town meeting and we were literally getting quotes in yesterday afternoon. And the problem is if you have twelve of these going on for one meeting, it becomes problematic for committee to be able to vote on. And we're also talking about having people come in three or four times to the committee uh, to come back with the answers that we given them or to come back with more information if the application wasn't completed in the beginning.
All right, so I understand your dilemma, but this is problematic for us to put a ball in one deal. But there's gotta, special town meeting is for special things. It's for things that need to be done on a timely basis. It's not general horse of business and that's what we wanna, we'll discuss as the board.
I'd say this is the only one out of, out of the project and it was just, you know, as we talked about it, it was this is just such a simple one that I had to match basically.
Yeah.
Um, we figured it wasn't that large of an issue.
Okay, yeah.
The, uh, the next, any other questions on that? Okay, the next, um, uh, application we had is from the Historic Society and the Historic Preservation Study. So the intention of this is to do a complete and full study. If you look at the application, there's a list of about, I don't know, thirty, forty deliverables that are on there. I didn't wanna list them all for this, but it's quite a complete study that had planned. Uh, the town has hundreds of, literally hundreds of sites from locations to objects that we purchased in the past, to cemeteries, to burial grounds and other sites. And the intention of this, uh, like other towns have done, is to develop a comprehensive historic preservation plan that would include everything that's currently in the curfew of the town. And, uh, most of it, a lot of the information is already, uh, been captured by the town in various surveys and, uh, other things that the Historical Society done. But it will, uh, we feel will they allow the town to have more informed discussions and, uh, decisions on some of the projects that are coming up. If you look at the history of CPC, I'd say most of the projects that we voted on have been from the historic side of the buckets that we have. Uh, they've been very small projects for the most part, but, uh, to be able to plan some of the bigger projects out so we make sure we have money available for those projects that might go, going down the road, I think is important. Uh, we've also, uh, looked at, uh, what other towns have done on this and some other towns have completed the survey. Uh, some other towns have hired an consultant for two years at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the pricing on this does seem reasonable compared to what other, other towns have paid for something that I think is even, uh, less of a deliverable than, than this is intended for.
Uh, Dan, last, uh, here, my, my, Doug, uh, was applying for a grant with Mass Historical Commission to do something like this.
Yes, that did not come through.
It did not.
Yes. But I think, uh, we had allocated fifteen thousand for that and we'll be reselling that at the annual town.
All right.
No.
Okay, good. So is this gonna be for all historical sites in town or just CPC, no, for the historic?
Including homes, right?
Uh, not, not just sites.
Including homes.
Yes.
It's an inventory, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there are, yeah, there are homes, there are, uh, town-owned properties. For example, uh, Mordecai Lincoln property is one we just acquired. There are things like, uh, the carriage that was purchased a long time ago, the fire engine that was, uh, being restored as we speak. Uh, there's hundred, literally hundreds of resources or that are out there that are historical that have not been categorized and planned. They're in different little places here and there. But this is to develop a plan moving forward of what, what to do with, with those.
That may have not been done yet. Okay. Uh, any questions on this? I, I would debate that that probably could have been on the annual town meeting, but, um, but next time.
And if you wanna see the deliverables, they are in the, uh, application that's on our website. I, I didn't wanna list the whole page in the app, deliverables, so that's.
So Damon Access?
Damon Access, I'm gonna group these two together if you don't mind. We have two projects that are basically, uh, I'll call the same even though they're at different locations, but, uh, several going back to, uh, two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen. Uh, the town completed land purchases at Crosby, Uni Bates and Damon Access and picnic area. Completed those acquisitions back then and started working since then on parking and picnic area for those locations, ADA access, et cetera. This is basically to finish those projects where what has happened over time since two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen is that, as you know, the price of everything has gone up and essentially, uh, the monies were, uh, allocated that were allocated and the cash haven't spent. So this is the additional funding for both of those projects to finish those projects.
I'll ask, uh, you know, probably ask, what have you spent already on this?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What have you spent already?
I'll have to go back and look.
Second page.
The, um, three, it was three hundred one year.
Maybe four hundred thousand dollars.
Already?
So if I might.
Yeah.
Um, after acquiring all this property, we made the decision to get access to parking at, uh, King and McGallister at the end of Hollycrest Road, which included a parking area. We added, um, some lane, Base Lane and created a parking area there. And then we put a new road in to, um, the Appleton Field and the Presby property to the parking there. And at the time, we made the Damon property and add all to them because we, just to be sure that we had enough money when those bits allocated and we didn't have enough money. We had some money for Damon, but not enough to do it all. So we did those other projects. We came back to CPC with conservation commission. We back to CPC for some more money, which we felt would be adequate to finish Damon and create an accessible picnic area at Appleton Field, at Base Lane and one at Damon. What we used for the, our assessment of how much work we needed was we used, what was the bids from the contractors before, adding about twenty percent, figuring that's enough for inflation. When the bids came in, we got pulled over, they were huge. And so we didn't even have enough money to finish building out Damon, let alone do the handicap, the accessible picnic areas. So what we've been doing is, is we're using contractors that are approved by the town with piecemealing Damon Access was started then. And now working, working with DPDW, you know, with administration, we were able to get road millings from the road servicing projects instead of paying thirty bucks a yard material, we're essentially getting it for free. So we're in the process of doing the Damon project and trying to do that with the money that we have available. Uh, we won't have enough money to do the accessible picnic areas in those locations. And so that's what we're hoping to finish, um, is those picnic areas and, um, a couple of the small items. Um, but we're just, we were talking about earlier with the road in Cushion. The cost of these things, what we saw a few years ago while we're getting the bids now is the same.
One comment, one, what's, so Frank, the four hundred thousand that you mentioned was not for Damon, it was for all of those. And that was.
And there was pieces that he wanted to be able to finish. I think we did it, we, we got, we stretched that money pretty well and the, the access into Appleton is a really long road. Um, the, the Base Lane, um, extended that really nicely and so did King and McGallister. We also at the same time had another bunch of trails and bridges and all those kind of things, which I think would have, personally think that would have done a good job of maxing that out. And, uh, just, we just walked away by the, the bids that we got, you know, when we started to do the Damon. And everybody's been super cooperative with the, on the phone, with my screen data, Sean. They're telling me where the projects are, we're trying to stay one step ahead of it. When they start branding, all rise those roads, we're getting the material, um, to do that, which is saving us forty, fifty thousand dollars.
One, one comment I would make too is the quotes that, uh, they have gotten have been, uh, just wide, wide range of pricing. You can see from the slides, one was seventy to a hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
And methodology that was used for these applications was to take the average of the two, the high and the low and ask for that and hopefully that would be sufficient to complete this project.
Any questions on this? So the bigger, would be kind of bigger, I mean, assuming so.
Well, it, so at, at, at both Damon and, um, at Crosby, it'll be right off the parking area. So essentially someone could park there with family. If someone had some mobility issues, could be an easy spot. At Base Lane, we're actually gonna take it a little bit further up the road because we improved Base Lane with a high surface. So it'll be just a little bit further up, so family could actually take and go up and be in those, you know, handicaps or something like that. But it, we had really big feedback from the, um, I think, uh, Disabilities Commission when we talked about that on how much they've enjoyed even the simple picnic area that we have in the riverfront next to the docks. You know, just a place where they can, families could use that. So there'll be just one picnic table at each spot. It will have an open end so it can be used for someone that could wear a wheelchair or, or whatever. Yes.
Okay, you want, yes?
Is Damon paved?
Damon is, what we're using is road millings, so we're using some.
Damon's the one that, just correct me if I'm wrong, it's the one that is on the west side right before you get to Boot Hill Road as you're coming, right? Isn't that Damon back there? Is that where that access is?
The field between Grove Street and Boot Hill on left.
Right, on left, okay, so, right.
It's just getting started.
Okay, that's doesn't say that I haven't accessed it yet, okay. So you're just starting on that.
Yep, there was a real narrow path that went in with a bunch of concrete, we cleared all that out and then Doug and you broke it out.
Yeah. It'd be shady, yeah, okay, perfect. That's right.
Um, I guess the only thought that comes to mind is Frank, you even said that these prices are crazy right there. They're way above the expected. Do you still wanna do it or do we wanna wait and see if it comes down or, I mean, is it tiny? I mean, I know, I know you guys in the home are getting it done, but at what point does crazy say, let's wait and see if it come down?
So I, I think what we're hoping to do when we put these back out to, to bid, that we'll actually have something that can be done in the winter, which will hopefully get us a better. Right, so, so we didn't agree to, to do that. We got those figures and said, that's way too much money. We're not gonna spend that kind of money. And working with Administrator, DPC, um, DPDW, we're piecemealing this work. So we're, they're hiring poor contractors by the town and they're digging the thing out. Working with, um, DPDW to get these materials that would get all out of town. So we think we're doing okay with that as opposed to paying a premium. You know, it's a little bit of work, I've gotta go there. All spots been great supervising it. And so we're not, I don't think we're overpaying for anything on that aspect. When we get to these picnic areas, if we put them out to bid and, and they're too much money, then we'll have to back up and say, well, let's wait a bit. It's not like we have to have it. Um, but it would be nice to bring it to fruition, but at the same time, no, we're not gonna waste money on it. And it'd be great to move, uh, Dan back, so I'll be at the end of the day.
Kevin's even trying to schedule a chainsaw safety class to go out.
Clear the woods.
Yeah, what's that? Shouldn't want that. We've been trying to, Frank said with piecemealing on contracts.
Well, this, oh, you know.
Everybody's been great, you know, cooperating, great.
We're, we're getting a lot of bids. It's like, I'm too busy to do it. If they wanna pay me something crazy, I'll do it, but I'm just sorry, I'm sorry about that.
The next one is the, um, Ellis, I think, the Bailey Ellis Tower and front door. Uh, so this is a continuing rehabilitation of the Bailey Ellis House. This project is specifically for the windows of the tower and some of the interior repairs that are needed in the tower, uh, going down to the second floor as well. And then, uh, restoration of the front door, which is in, uh, legal repair. So this is a continuing project by this, by the Arts Association. It's one of the historic resources that town has. And, um, basically, they've been, uh, working on some of the structural things in the basement and drains over the past few years and now we're attacking the, uh, tower and the windows that are leaking and parts of the tower are patting to be repaired as well as front door. Uh, there is a fifteen thousand dollar grant from Mass Cultural Council Facilities Fund that will be used for this. And the CPA part is eighty-nine five. The total cost of the project is a hundred and five thousand. And this is coming from the historic fund. And this is coming from the historic fund.
It looks like eight windows and a front door. Uh, it's actually, I think, a little more than that. I'm not sure that. I'm just looking at a picture.
There is eight windows in the tower. There is a window in the studio that's attached to the tower. And then there are two other studio windows on the backside of the house. In fact, they will all be have been restored in storm, which is what restoration specialists recommend.
So about twelve windows?
Twelve windows and the front doors. And then the windows that are in the front door, uh, those.
I'm sorry, just give your names.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rob and Yvonne, twenty-six percent. And Janet, I'll show her the others. The windows in the front door, we set those aside so they wouldn't get damaged. So those we have and will be replaced. Right now, there's just plexi glass.
As part of this?
Yes. So, and basically those doors are double doors and they are in continually getting worse. Their light paint is crumbling off. So maybe we actually got a dirty advice from someone who must have been restored.
Questions?
I'd like to say thank the Arts Association for taking good care of the property because if we owned it and it was empty, it would be very, 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 very. And you've been great at getting grants, so I don't think so.
Yeah, like part of the reason we're doing this right now is we need to get matching sums to get that right for those ones.
And did you, you said, you mentioned restoration. Are they going to fix the woodwork around it?
It's going to be a complete restoration.
So I'm looking under the window, it looks like, I can't tell if that's damage or.
Yeah, that's all that we literally have to get fifteen thousand or more dollars for the scaffolding to get up there. And they're going to be rebuilding it from the top down, restoring. But obviously, a lot of that wood, as far as I can figure, nothing has ever been done to that other than painting it since it was built. So we're dealing with some wood that's going to need some serious work.
Right, so it's more structured than just coming in.
Yeah, it's, it's a structural repair plus the window restoration. We started with the application to Mass Cultural for the windows. And once we started looking at the windows, we realized that there were structural issues. When we re-roofed, we suspect that the company that did it did not fully flash it properly, so water has been getting in. And you can see why it would be hard to assess how well they flashed it, so. And that was one of those ones we can't put it out in, and it wasn't a local contractor who knew. So there's something to be said for getting a local advisor to understand sort of construction. We're hoping to figure out a way how to do that. The basic tower of the build was fifty thousand and I'm hoping to do it in April.
Thank you. Wait, any questions from the audience on any of the topics? No? Great, Dan, thank you for the presentation. The next topic is the consent agenda. So this year's, um. A list of the consent agenda items were. Which ones do you have?
Is that anything different than what's, did something change?
Uh, I believe so, so unpaid bills, budget reconciliation, transfers to reserve, article ten, which is the senior center food service involving fund changes, the OPM trust, article technical reauthorization, the OPM trust, and then the two easement articles. Uh, I was informed this evening that article thirteen, the water street easement, one of those properties may be sold. So I've asked council if we can amend it for the new property owner, if we have their permission or if we have to take it to a future company. But I just got that before the meeting started, so I'm so, that might end up being postponed. Really, these are the routine articles that we would do at a special time meeting on a regular basis.
And article one is actually the consent.
Article one is the water treatment plan.
Oh.
So that's not, we could put that on the consent agenda, but I'm sure someone would want to take it off.
Let's do it.
So two, three, four.
Starting off with the water treatment plan.
Well, you've got the consent agenda.
Right.
Knocked that off in the first title, which would probably be the one that's going to generate the most conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Will be the water treatment.
So four, ten. Any questions on these? If you can't get to. Do you need a motion for that or?
Yes. There's one that was passed out to the board. To be moved to include following articles in the consent agenda for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two special time meeting, two unpaid bills, three fiscal year twenty twenty-three, budget reconciliations, four transfers to reserves, ten amend general bylaws section one zero two six zero involving senior center food service fund, eleven local option re-acceptance, mass general launch after trigger to be section twenty, OPM trust number, number twelve acceptance of easement at twenty-seven Brook Street, and thirteen acceptance of easement at fifty and fifty-four Water Street.
Second by. Mr. Curran for the discussion, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye is unanimous, four to zero. The next topic is a discussion of local contract to Spencer Preservation Group as designers for the house restoration.
Excellent. Um, putting in your packet, you had the information about the process that town would through, you should do our due request for qualifications designers for the White House restoration project. It was on expedite process, received by council, it was a review committee, and it ended up executing to firms, WJP engineers and Spencer Preservation Group. The members of the engineering team decided to look forward to Spencer Preservation Group. We did not receive the pricing information until this afternoon. That's why it was on your packet, I apologize. But we're still trying to keep this project on the best as of the concern about the White House restoration group. So the proposal is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for designer and that includes investigation, site survey, 3D modeling, emergency removal process, then like permitting plans, specs, post-bid oversight, and the restoration as well. The site survey and 3D model were at town's option to choose not to do it, but that was something that many other firms brought forward. That would be a really good idea that, that we have a whole 3D model of the White House on how to take apart. The schedule for the project, uh, the investigation, so seeing what the actual state of White House is in, documenting all that, it's about four weeks, emergency removal about ten weeks, and then restoration is thirty-two weeks. So that would be the rest of the actual White House, not just the interim. And then the overall total duration is just shy every year.
Any questions for the answer?
Yeah, so this is the whole thing.
This is that two, the two million dollar project?
So, all right, so this is just the design and engineering, the investigation, et cetera. But it also includes possibility that they will have to actually take a lantern off. They're anticipating how we're going to do that, right?
That's in the investigation part.
But does, is that removal and.
Sorry, my.
No, no, we, no, but this is actually a bid. This is going to be a determination on how that lantern removal is fixed.
Okay.
Whether it's going to come off. And we all believe, and I think designer, it's going to have to come off. You're not going to fix it there.
Yeah.
But that would actually be part of the bid, this won't much to do.
So, well, let me just say, I thought the group was extremely well qualified and the projects they've done are really amazing. So I'm very impressed with them all, because.
I think there was some robust discussion, I think the designer between the finalists. And I think really the thought on this particular designer was they're going to put their hot soul into this project, this will be their. When they send out the polls of the future, the center White House is going to be.
On the cover.
It's going to be the one that has.
As marquee project.
And the OPM costs about three point four percent. This designer decided with what the contract, what, nine point one percent and two million? So we still have about eighty-seven percent of opportunity remaining for construction portion of this project.
What was the bid from the other people?
We didn't take a price proposal, this is a request for qualifications.
Yeah. You can pick it based on the proposals that you negotiated. So we will need to.
So when we did the estimate of two million, was this what we thought this part would cost?
It's about right, usually a design and engineering is seven to ten percent. So the project cost, so it's quite a lot.
Any questions?
No, thank you for. Accelerate.
There is a possibility that we'll get the construction phase. There will be emergency procurement and can be anywhere to the designers from any investigated version by TAC, I can request that you can clear it.
Well, you know what, it's a great. And maybe that.
I mean, a lot of the.
This is very similar to the specs.
No, no, but like, what I'm saying is, that's why you need those species.
For committing.
A lot of the upfront costs, that'll be the investigations as to what's going on, documented today so they can come back.
Great. Make sure Chinese, so they can read their families and then buy nice spouses and nice cousins.
We can't, we can't get this one wrong.
I could have a motion if, if no questions. Awarded the contract to Spencer Preservation Group for Design Services for the restoration of the White House in the amount that to exceed a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
So move.
Second.
I'm just going to second, it was, um, Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Nancy. Thank you, Nancy. All right. You were going to read it, so I was. Okay, the. Okay, and then all this, we've got a discussion vote on the, um, the visitor order, what is this? Betterment direction, what are the.
People are. Yeah. This was an error that was made in a recording of deed at three seventy Apple Road, the board voted on it in two thousand and eighteen, but it was never filed with the registry of deeds. So on the vice of legal counsel, she suggested that we need to revote it tonight. And then I will have Joe Donido file with the registry of deeds.
Great, we have a motion.
Move to report at the Plymouth County District, a plenary order assessing sewer betterments to correct the June fifth, two thousand and fourteen order assessing final sewer betterments reporting an order to correct the deed reference for three hundred and seventy calories.
Second by. Mr. Conley for the discussion. So does this have to do with any betterment assessment?
No, it's just correcting. It's not adjusting any assessment amount, it's just correcting the property. To align with the sewer betterment for the.
Anybody else with that?
There was a mismatch of the description of the parcel.
Sitting on the top reference.
So is someone going to get a sewer betterment that came in before?
It says the betterment on the parcel for the omitted project description is completed in full. It is now time to correct the recording for the other parcel that was listed with the incorrect details. The town is not losing any money on this, we're just fixing the records.
We'll run it to our attention.
The assessor.
Was somebody summoned and it just sort of came to like.
Yeah.
But it was supposed to be done in two thousand and eighteen and you voted on it back then. But it was never done.
And were we supposed to do it?
Either.
Was it not supposed to be?
Yes.
I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, four to zero. Um, next, uh, new business, we've got some one-day liquor licenses.
Will that select board approve one-day wine and all licenses to. To one, you speak to them all, does anybody have any questions by that day then? Okay. Lively done catering for private event on August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, from six thirty P M to ten P M, the Central Maritime Center. Lively done catering for a private event on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, from seven P M to ten P M, the Central Maritime Center. Ellen McKenzie catering for a private event on August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, from six P M to ten P M, the Central Maritime Center. And Wayne Fish Marby for a private event on August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and September second, twenty twenty-two, from seven to ten, the.
Second by, second. Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye is unanimous, great. The next discussion vote on the board and committee appointments for traffic course regulations. Uh, we had interviews last, last meeting where we interviewed Dan, Bill and Bill. And we have, get to appoint somebody.
At the end, uh, one position or two, if I forget.
One, one.
One, one over, okay.
So they're going to ask before we go, do we want to wait for, um, Karen, can't feel to be here for this, or would be. You'll, uh.
Traffic rules.
What was?
On the stand for us, we had three for one, Dan, you've got the traffic number one, condition on disabilities, number two, cultural council, number three.
So you're really the only one that was interested in doing something on the. The other two were kind of, uh.
Yeah.
More interested in the Damon other than what's going on in the deep bill, right?
Um, well, I was saying that's a fair assessment for one, but that was.
So I think, I think the thought was that, that Damon, we could probably assign to do another one. I remember that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He could actually probably do both of those other ones.
I'm sorry?
He could, I'm sorry, he could probably actually do both of those other ones.
Oh.
The cultural council doesn't need to have a.
I thought, I thought Bill Schmidt, he's done a great job around the committee, isn't he?
Well, I've had a few conversations with him, like he seems very interested, but also again, because of his background, I think he has an understanding of the intricacies of how things.
He missed that.
Yeah, work or total work or process. And the other gentleman I thought was very enthusiastic, his petition was capable of petition. But I think he seems like he's going to continue on that path no matter what. I thought that was.
So do you want to make a motion for Bill Schmidt?
Move to appoint Bill Schmidt to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of three years, three years?
It's actually one year.
Two years committed.
Okay, one year.
Unfortunately.
And until the completion of the successor's name, what? Oh, read it. Until a successor's name, oh, thank you, go ahead. And then completion of complicative law on returning programs, please, in the third case.
In the third case.
Second.
Do you want a second?
I'll second it.
The director, Mr. Curran, second by Mr. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, four to zero. Do we want to appoint Dan to one of these committees now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, chair, and not, to the rest. Uh, I think there's up to three of them, he's on the commission on disability, that was the second round.
Yes.
That was the second choice. It's always.
The end of our openings on the cultural process about we want to appoint it to.
We need to.
Why, why don't we put him on disability, and when you call him up and tell him, if he wants to be on both?
He is a loved.
Then we can do that in the next meeting. You want to?
And is C O D three, three years?
It is three years, yes.
Uh, move to appoint Dan Torry to the commission on disability for a term of three years, or until successor's name completion of the knowledge permit law on returning programs, please, in the third case.
So, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye is unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you vote any of the articles tonight? Uh, well, Karen, or the capital pay, I think we could.
Um, I, do we have another meeting to do it?
I don't think so.
It was on the agenda, I'm just asking if.
At least gotta wait for Karen to be here, because you don't have time to do it at weekend, yeah.
According to your timeline, how's we got it tonight?
Okay. I don't think there's anything really controversial.
Yeah. Is advice for the even person, right?
Yeah, so I think we can do it. Well, we already voted on the consent ones.
Yeah, it's just five, six, seven, eight, I can read it.
Go back to. The Article seven and eight.
Five, six, seven, eight, right? Yes.
Oh, one.
You did one at the last meeting.
We voted it?
You voted it, your seven, twenty, meeting, one through four, and nine through fourteen.
Okay, so we just have to do the two planning one?
Yeah, the, the four, the five, six, seven, eight, two planning, and the capital, complete preservation.
As they all, they have separate motions for it.
So, can I, uh?
So if we could do the two planning first, in the beginning of the meeting.
Well, are we just voting to, to support them, or what?
I think Nancy has the legal information here on each motion.
Okay. Somebody have left that to read on, okay.
It's in the ballot.
It's not printed. It's not written?
No.
So can we just say move to approve Article five as written?
I mean, I can read it, or we can.
You could?
I could.
Yes, I can hear this.
You have it?
H sixty-nine.
What we do in the board, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Um, move to approve Article seven to amend section seven fifty of zoning bylaws relevant to setback, step back, and street closures, and aren't late to amend section seven fifty of zoning bylaws relevant to penthouses.
So, so moved by Mr. Goodrich, second by Mr. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, because I miss the observation.
So that's three, zero, and two extensions.
Three, four, and section.
One of the section one, perhaps.
Oh, one option.
Just play one now.
Okay, the next one, I'm happy to read as well, if you'd like.
Thank you, thank you very much.
The next one would be the capital, um, improvement plan.
Wait, did we do Article seven and eight together?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
We just did our.
Yeah, I'm ready to debate with this, okay.
So. Okay, you ready for the capital?
Yep.
Move to approve Article five of the nine nineteen twenty-two special town meeting, including one, one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand additional funding for whole park revenue dock replacement project, two, one million two hundred and thirty-five thousand jack-in school roof replacement, three, township grant for pity safe code, one hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred, four, replacement of ambulance, four hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars, and five, emergency water treatment plant repairs, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
Move by Mr. Goodrich, second by Mr. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, C P C?
Okay, C P C, and that, move to approve Article six of the nine nineteen twenty-two special town meeting, uh, for C P C, including, uh, Article, I mean, number one, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for reconstruction of ninety, a ninety-foot baseball field, number two, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pushing trail restoration, number three, one thirteen thousand fifteen-two dollars for each permission movie mats, number four, sixty thousand dollars for historic preservation study, sorry, number five, one hundred and five thousand seven hundred dollars for Damon access of the area, number six, number seven, thousand dollars, five hundred dollars for crossing the east clinic area, and number seven, maybe nine thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars for Bailey Alex House, who goes tower and door restoration. Second.
Second by Mr. Conley, further discussion, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye is unanimous, four to zero. Great, Nancy, do we have to do anything else, or is that it? Awesome. Uh, other business, any ears on reports?
Yes, one.
Yes.
We did interview three firms, um, for the Harvard. I think P O forty-four now, it's easier. And they were all excellent, and we did make a recommendation to kind of minister here, who's, as I understand, a negotiating contractor. It is a successful negotiation, uh, will be presenting to the board next week with a summary of the, the three interviews, and why we selected the, the fellow we selected.
Great.
Excellent, excellent. It's gonna be very exciting.
You have us?
I don't mind, I'm ready.
The, um, whatever resources committee, if you have in your annual, uh, end of the month, the exact date, town, building name, uh, general public meeting, last questions, rep bar, uh, representation, and the trial, they do this every year, it's a little, and they have, uh, from the, uh, reverse association, I'm sorry, yeah, Harry Burke. Anyway, look forward to that, it's always great, really. People always ask, a lot of people, usually, September eighteen.
I think he'd very proud of the chairs, that way.
August eighteen. Thank you, August eighteen.
Great, and I'll just add, uh, rep had a meeting last week, and they went over, uh, two major topics were increase in fees, and they're gonna come present that to us, and then also, uh, that was associated with the fact that there's now a large light bill associated with the new fields over there, and how to do that. We did find out that, um, apparently National Grid does not build us anything from, from the last year and a half, and we're gonna be preparing a new bill for all the usage of last.
When they find us out.
Yes. So, um, they'll be unfortunate for that stuff. Great, any correspondence?
We have lots of correspondence, so.
Just summarize.
I'm.
I'm hungry.
So, uh, obviously, a lot of great letters from many, many residents that are, um, in support of the mine staircase project. We, uh, we continue, our town and our staff continues to do wonderful work, uh, receiving new grants. Um, so we, sixty-four thousand dollar grant from Cleveland County, um, for, um, from the, you know, COVID relief fund, which is great. We also have from the Mass Department of Transportation roadway projects, including seven hundred and forty-three thousand, and then it's a new one for drug education donation from Cleveland County District Attorney, five thousand, so. Lots of additional funds coming into town. Correspondence from, um, one, Italy regarding, uh, her support for Digi's People's Day, which now the general item is moved out. Um, correspondence notification of certifying our free cash. Which is great.
Do you want me to read what it is?
Sure.
All right. So based on the unautomated balance sheet submitted, they certified the amount of available funds of free cash as of July one in the general fund, um, a little bit over five million dollars, in Quiddles Quot, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the enterprise transfer fund, approximately five or thirteen thousand in the water fund, one point five million, water rates, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and sewers, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so those are all just, you know. And then correspondence from the South Shore Regional School District, talking about, um, distribution of funds, um, going back slightly to the towns, right, from the surplus, and so such, we'll get that, four thousand six hundred and seventy million dollars. Remembered that correctly, right? Oh, this is our annual expedity note, um, about, well, completion of, uh, the Olympic Channel's cease operation on September thirtieth, and effective September, E P I S will no longer be available, I don't know that it exists. It's, it's the channel, I know, but I don't watch it, so.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I have it, I have it on. And that's it for correspondence.
Great job.
Didn't have the new James Bond movie.
It did.
Something I kind of watched.
And maybe the month where I watched horrible losses this September.
I'll just watch that series.
Sounds like it must be like a nightmare. Yes.
Got a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, uh, we would approve to accept the meeting minutes, about slot four, reading out, on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Second, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye is unanimous, and lastly, can I have a motion to adjourn and sign that?
So.
Second by.
Second.
Mr. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Good night, everybody. Thank you, and a special thanks to everyone that helped with the heritage takes.